Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at (931) 347-9150 or visit haneyrealtypound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate.
If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mstaffing.net or give us a call today at (931) 347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit pesenergize.com or call us today.
Homes to Insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at winterboroinsurance.com or call us at (931) 363-8638.
Department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
Now to qualify as chair, y'all need to know how to do the tablets. I get the big chair up, it's not where you... Sorry, I get the big chair up instead first. Matthew, y'all two?
I'm still...
We're still reading?
There you go. I thought they got the sign. I'm waiting on his too.
Okay.
Okay, I have presence now.
Yep. All rise. Candy Court is silent station. I'm Graham Stone. Mr. Reed, will you please, please, sir?
Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for this time of year where we see the beauty of your handiwork, especially in this county where we got so much beauty that we see in this time of year. We know that's a sign from you that you're truly living God and that you are making the world beautiful for us to enjoy for a short time. Lord, I just ask you to be with our nation. Lord, we have a lot of turmoil in our nation and we just... I just ask you that in view of all the killings that we've had recently, the Charlie Kirk killing, and also we ask you to be with his family. The young lady on the transit in North Carolina, I ask you, Lord, to bless her. There's been many school shootings. Lord, it appears that we are kind of losing ground on our ability to show brotherly love and to put up with each other's differences of opinion from our own. And I ask you to help us as a nation to show brotherly love to each other and to also know that we can walk arm in arm when we don't see eye to eye. Help us to have patience with each other and uphold their rights and abilities to have differences of opinion. Lord, I ask you to be with various people in this county. I ask you to be with the family of Bill Lee Young and just comfort them as only you know how. We're thankful for his endeavors to try to promote industrial and business opportunities in this county. We just thank you for all the effort he has put in and we just ask you that his endeavors not go unrewarded, that we continue on and fulfill the dream of promoting the business entities in this county. Also, Lord, I ask you to continue to heal the hurting heart of Joyce as she agrees for Jethro and just heal her as only you know how. Lord, as we have a long agenda today, no doubt we're going to disagree and thank you, Lord, that we've been able to disagree but still and not be so disagreeable that we can still be friends and show brotherly love to each other. Blessed as we go through the rest of this meeting and help us as a county to do the things that will help the individuals that are yet fortunate to be born. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the agenda is for you and Carol sent it out about a week ago. Are there any corrections to the agenda for today? Yes, Caleb?
Prior to the approval of the minutes, I would like to request that we recognize a moment of silence to recognize the memory and life of the works of Charlie Kirk.
So just before we go to the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're going to add that to the agenda. Are there any objections to that? Okay, so that's added. Is there anything else? Okay, all in favor of agenda concurrence, can you say aye?
Aye.
If you oppose, okay, motion carried. So Caleb, I'm gonna let you lead.
So, it was something that really brought... In prayer, I really had to think about what led us to this point, the point that we would kill someone for having differing views from ourselves. And as I began to think about it, the Lord pointed me to several scriptures. And what stood out to me the most is that the devil's entire goal is to divide us and put us into separate groups, whether that be political groups, whether that be division by our race, ethnicity, or where we're from. And everyone has a purpose and everyone looks for a place where they belong. As for me, I find my comfort in Christ. But for those of us who do not find our comfort in Christ, they are still looking for a place where they belong. And that is where people get involved in these hate groups and other things where they focus on people and because everyone is... I apologize to have trouble getting my words correctly on this, but everyone's looking for where they belong. And that's where these hate groups and other people can take hold of someone's mind. And in the end, it makes us wonder where does this evil come from? The evil comes from the devil. He preys on people whose minds are not fully rooted in Christ. And in the end, in the kingdom of God, there is no male or female, there is no black-white, there is no Democrat, there is no Republican. All that matters is that the only way to heaven is Christ. I've seen so much online that it is really easy to become very disheartened. But I just urge everyone to find their comfort in Christ. He said that His burden and yoke are light. Don't grow disheartened. God uses all bad things for good. God did not cause this, but He will cause a great harvest to come from the death of Charlie Kirk. I believe that we are already seeing that to occur. And in the scheme of things, I'm the county commissioner, Graham Stone's the county executive, Bill Lee is the governor of Tennessee, and Donald Trump's the president of the U.S. But in the end, Christ is king and that's all that matters.
Amen.
So, I just ask everyone to now observe a moment of silence to honor Mr. Kirk.
Thank you.
Next on your agenda are the approval of your minutes, which were also forwarded. I'll entertain a motion to approve your minutes from Mr. Hopkins, consent from Mr. Brown. Any corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, the minutes are approved, reganam is consent. And next on your agenda are public comments. Are there any public comments on issues on the agenda? I see Jesse back here. Just please form a line at the podium and just know, yeah, I don't have a sign-in sheet and I don't have a microphone on this podium, so please project... Speak loudly.
I got one out.
Thank you. Hi, Jesse. Come right here. Sit right here, turn that mic.
Hello. I can't see it, Anell, it's so... No, I'm just kidding.
Well, it's cool.
I'm not gonna take that much time. Am I good, everybody? All right, I left each of you a handout about tourism. It's just a quick summation of what I'm gonna say. I'm here today on behalf of the Giles County Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is a member-funded organization and we're proud to serve as a state-designated destination marketing organization for Giles County. You'll hear us call that the DMO. But I wanna make something real clear and just to cover up, just make sure that we distinguish that the Chamber, we lend our office space, our staff, and our overhead at no charge for tourism. We use 100% of this appropriation that we're requesting for tourism promotion and not just to keep the lights on at our office. So what is the money for? It's to market Giles County as a visitor destination. That means we're increasing sales tax revenue, which helps relieve pressure on property taxpayers and growing occupancy tax revenue, which feeds into the county's building fund. Even better, your local dollars don't stand alone. We leverage them through regional partnerships and state tourism co-ops and grants. That multiplies your investment and stretches it farther than we could have done on our own. Where is this money coming from? We just talked about this in the Budget Committee and I wanted to answer that today. It's already here. Visitors brought in over $1 million in local sales tax last year and have for several years going forward, or in the past, excuse me. Hotels, Airbnbs, and other short-term rentals generate over $200,000 annually into the building fund. What we're asking for is to invest a small 10%, close to 10% of that building fund back into tourism so that we can keep growing it year after year. And finally, why is this important? Tourism is about more than just a visitor. It's about strengthening the local economy. Tourism brings outside dollars, expanding the customer base for our local businesses. It generates a positive net income for the county at a very low cost. And most importantly, it helps protect our residents from higher property taxes because visitors are helping pay for the services we rely on, such as roads, emergency services, and infrastructure. In short, this appropriation request is not an expense, it's an investment. It's one that consistently pays back more than it costs year after year. Consideration of our request is much appreciated. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kristy Henson and I'm with District 3. Thank y'all for letting me speak and I wanna thank all the commissioners for the job you do. I know you all have other jobs and put a lot of time and effort into this. But I know later today y'all are gonna be talking about streamlining the legislative body and I just wanted to speak to that. I'm here today to propose to change to our county's voting method for electing the commissioners. Currently, voters are allowed to cast votes for up to three candidates, even though only three seats are being filled. I believe this system can dilute individual voter influence and reduce accountability. Instead, I propose a single vote system where each voter selects only one candidate and the top two or three vote-getters are elected. Why make this change? Because it promotes fair representation. Each voter's voice carries equal weight rather than being spread across multiple candidates. It reduces strategic voting. Voters won't feel pressured to vote for multiple candidates or vote against other candidates. It encourages accountability. Candidates must appeal directly to their constituents, knowing each vote counts toward a singular choice. It simplifies the process. A single vote is easier to understand and administer and aligns with many modern election practices. The change would not reduce the number of commissioners elected. It simply ensures that each citizen casts one meaningful vote, helping us elect the most representative leaders of our county. While the idea of electing two or three commissioners per district is intended to enhance representation, the way it's currently implemented may actually reduce it and in practice can leave a portion of voters without a voice. Under the current system, each voter casts their three votes and the top three vote-getters are elected. This often results in three like-minded individuals winning seats, who then tend to vote in lockstep on key issues. While this may reflect the views of the majority, it can leave a significant minority, sometimes up to a third of a district, without meaningful representation. And if this system continues unchanged, we might ask, would we be any worse off with just one commissioner per district? At least then the representation would be clear and direct. However, if we choose to keep the two or three commissioners per district, let's do it in a way that ensures broader representation by allowing each voter to cast only one vote. We give more space for voices to be heard and increase the likelihood that minority viewpoints are represented at the table. And this just isn't about fairness, it's about strengthening our democracy and ensuring every citizen feels seen and heard in the decisions that affect their community. I respectfully ask that the commission to consider initiating a review or referendum process to explore this voting model. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I just wanna point out that those are great ideas and I'd like to work with you on them, but the commission doesn't have authority to make that happen.
Okay.
That would be at the general assembly level. So, I think it's TCA code is what specifies how we vote based on the number of commissioners that are running. Let's work together, don't discard that, I just don't think this commission can change it.
Okay.
Next, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Andy Edwards, a voter from District 5 and also the Chair of the Regional Planning Commission. I've worked for nonprofits most of my career, so I know a lot about getting things through committee. It is not easy. It is difficult and I understand that. And I understand that a lot of the conversation around reducing the number of representatives in this commission to 14 is kinda centered on that, making things more streamlined, more efficient, more effective possibly, because it's hard to get things through a large body like this. I understand that. I promise you, I understand that through a lot of the different things, even on the Regional Planning Commission at times, we don't agree and it makes it more difficult. However, that's not what the county commission is for. The county commission is meant to be a representative form of government and I would contend that reducing the number of representatives that we have as voters in the county is a huge Governments should be able to disagree without being disagreeable. Mr. Reed, that was an amazing part of your prayer and I couldn't agree more. We ought to be cordial, even if we disagree. And I look at around at many of you in this room that I've probably disagreed with, but I hope you think we've been cordial for the most part. The government should be slow with difficult decisions. You all have a lot of weight in front of you on things that you have to decide, whether it be budgets, or rules, or regulations, or changes. I don't envy you for that, but I would say that they require contemplation and not snap decisions. I don't believe that efficiency is a measure of success for this commission. Dictatorships are efficient, but they're not the best form of government. We gotta be smart about what we do. I think we are not taking into account the unintended consequences of reducing this commission from 21 to 14. We need a commission of 21 commissioners to carry out the business of this large county and I thank you for your time. That's all I've got.
Hi, I'm Leah Bailey. I'm speaking today to express my concern regarding reducing the number of commissioners from 21 to 14. One of the arguments for reducing the number of commissioners is that it will increase nimbleness and government efficiency. I can understand those arguments. I believe there's a good chance the 28% property tax increase would have passed with only 14 commissioners and I think the public outcry would have been much worse. The response by the citizens at the 16% property tax increase that eventually did pass was notable and reveals why we need a greater number of representatives in government. It also shows one of the real problems facing this county, the lack of communication between local government and the public, not the number of commissioners. Here are the drawbacks and concerns I have. I did some research and repeatedly the drawbacks listed for less commissioners included diminished public representation and a less diverse perspective, which I see as the possibility of overlooking needs, issues, and less comprehensive policymaking. One of the main risks I see is something I'm not sure this commission has considered. Commissioners have had to miss votes due to vacation and health issues in the past, which is understandable. Anyone from this town knows how many people are related to each other in one way or another and how large an employer of the government is. Conflicts of interest could be another issue. Will a district vote due to a conflict of interest in certain situations end up where certain districts isn't represented when we're down to two? Having more commissioners reduces the likelihood of a conflict of interest occurring and a district risking being completely unrepresented in a vote due to this issue. I believe it was also said that with 14, we could have commissioners on every committee. As it is, commissioners can attend committee meetings along with the public. I would love to hear numbers on the attendance rate of each commissioner at committee meetings this year before voting on this. If a certain number are already missing committee meetings, whether they are on them or not, that would definitely impact my opinion. I would rather have more commissioners in hopes at least two from my district would be able to attend most committee meetings. Also, if we can have 14 on committees, why don't we already? If the Budget Committee had had more people's input and votes, we may have avoided our failure to pass the first one through full committee. Of my three commissioners, two engage in conversation with me about issues and concerns, etc. I may not always agree with their vote, but I understand their reasoning. Whenever I call the third, I only get a reply of okay or something like that. Some commissioners outside my district never answer the phone or respond. Engaging in conversation is key. I dread even calling this person now because it is disheartening to hear no reasoning behind their decision-making process. I feel dismissed. How many of you have asked your constituents their thoughts on this issue? In my opinion, the number of commissioners didn't cause the major issues and delays we've seen this year. The public outcry did. I admit, a small number of commissioners will be more nimble and will probably be able to pass more through, but I think it's at too great a cost. It concentrates power and control to fewer people. I believe the way our government, our American government, was formed and the checks and balances put in place was to make it hard to change anything without agreement and compromise. Gridlock was and is a vital part of government because it forces agreement, compromise, and conversation across personal opinions, party affiliations, and more. With a larger number of representatives for the districts in our county, more people have to come together, work together, and agree or compromise to pass the laws, resolutions, and budgets that impact the citizens. That benefits everyone. In my opinion, to do away with more representation because it's easier and quicker to pass things through with fewer commissioners would be a mistake. Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Albury. People on Facebook know me as Lynn Albury and I'm from District 1. I can't expound any better on the number of commissioners than the two before me did. The only thing I can tell you is I did take a straw poll out of the 79 that said something. 40% were for the 14 and 54% were for the 21. A lot of people didn't respond. As we know, this is a small county and everybody does know everybody, so a lot of people are watching the posts that are on there and they're just watching and seeing what's going on. And the reason the group that I started was started was so that people could know what's going on in the county. Because when I first started looking into what was going on in the county, it's like pulling hen's teeth to find information. I know it's all public, but unless you know where to go to get the public information, it is hard to get. So that's why this group was started. And anytime any commissioners have anything to say on a comment that's made, Brad has commented some, that's wonderful because that's what we want. We want this interaction with our commissioners. Everybody can't come to the meetings, they've got ballgames. They've got ballgames. They work different shifts and stuff like that. So please, commissioners, join the page, comment on it. That's what we're looking for from you. But I also would want the twenty-one percent because I feel we would be represented better than we would with just the fourteen. The tax that was passed, I know some have already said that they're having to sell their properties, so the people that were renting the property, they're going to have to be looking for someplace. So my main question is, this American Rescue Plan, they're going to get a grant and I understand the grants to fix the health department, which we do need the health department fixed. When I first came here in ninety-seven, we had a full health department. You could go in and get a physical and everything. Now we have a nurse practitioner there one day a week that does STD testing. That's it. We need a health department here in Giles County for the people that cannot afford it. And I understand that. And I understand the roof is leaked and I understand that there's mold all throughout the building. Period. But my question is, with the grant, it's five hundred and ten thousand nine hundred dollars. Giles County is going to have to come up with one hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. Where are we going to get that money with just having a tax increase that people can't afford? Thank you and y'all keep up the good work. Like I say, please respond to my pa- the page.
Okay, is there any other public comment? One more? Go.
My name's Randy. I just want to say that I think twenty-one commissioners is way too many. If you start looking around, uh, Limestone County, very successful county, they, Athens is constantly growing. They only have three county commissioners. You look at Madison County, it's twice the size of Giles County and they run with six to seven county commissioners. So just, too many is too many and then you get too many opinions involved and it's just a constant battle. So I just want y'all to take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, thank you all for coming to the podium. Uh, now introduce Mr. Reese to give us our EDC update.
So the latest unemployment numbers we have were from July of this year. The unemployment rate in Giles County jumped from four point eight percent up to five point two percent. I've talked before about the fact that we're in this kind of seasonal period and I do expect to see that kind of trend back down over the next couple of months. It was actually five point two percent in July of last year as well and in August and September it dropped back down into the low fours, like four point two, four point three percent. So I do expect to see that trend down. The county surrounding us also saw the same kind of jump. If you look at Lawrence County, it went from four point six to five point four. Marshall County went from three point nine to four point seven. Murray County went from three point four up to four point three. On the project side, there continues to be activity, but we haven't had anything that we've submitted anything on since I was here before. Even though we do have these couple of buildings now that are owned by private individuals or private companies that we can offer up. The requests that we've had recently for buildings have been ones that have specified high ceiling heights, so like thirty-five, thirty-six feet. These buildings that we have access to that we can market now are in the mid twenties, twenty-five, twenty-six foot ceiling height and so they weren't suitable for that. There is a, an active project that I think I've mentioned to y'all before. There's a company and they don't want their name shared yet, but there's a company that has a location in Southern Middle Tennessee that's looking at expanding and they want a facility that has rail access because they don't currently have rail access where they are. And we have talked to them about the Mines Road property. There's a rail spur back behind there. We've also engaged with Tennessee Southern Rail and they have said that for a couple of million dollars that would be funded by the industry or by them, depending on how much volume they got, they could actually do a rail spur to that site. So it'd be physically located on the Mines Road property site, which is about twenty-five acres. So we continue to have discussions with this potential industry. I think it's probably going to be later this year before we will have an idea whether that could move forward or whether they've chosen another location. But I do feel good about our chances there because there, there really aren't many sites around Southern Middle Tennessee that have access to rail and so this site would definitely suit that. Update on the site development grant, the majority of that work is complete. On September third, we had a completion inspection with the contractor there and one of the things that the engineer highlighted was some of the drainage areas that they had dug around the site on Lot Five. It, it had rock in it that didn't conform to what they needed to make that drainage area completely stable and so they're going back out now and redoing some of that, pulling some of that rock up, putting some liners down underneath it, doing some things, but we're very close to finishing up this phase of the work there. PES is also running some power to that site. That should be completed late this month or early next month. And then the other thing we're looking at now is it, it looks like we're going to come in underspent on the grant that we received by about four hundred thousand dollars. And so one of the things we're doing right now i- is working with the engineer to determine, okay, what, what else would have to be done at that site short of building a spec building? Because we can't use this grant money in this phase to build a building. That would be outside of the scope that we got. But the scope of the grant says that we can prepare the site for the spec building and so what we're trying to do now is determine additional work that we're going to have to do at a next phase anyway and go ahead and see if we can start to do some of that work with the money that we have left over that the state authorizes. Now again, there would be the fifteen percent match that goes with that, seven and a half percent for the county, seven and a half percent for the city, but it still would be within the scope of what we discussed before and the resolution that we passed to fund that. And so I'll keep you updated as we move forward on that, but we will continue to look at what we can do there. We have, most of you are familiar with the Three Star Certification our county has. We did an asset-based strategy session here a few months ago that some of you in this room were a part of and there were three goals set coming out of that and one of the goals was, how, how do we take advantage of the beautiful outdoors that we have in Giles County? That's one of our assets, right? And so how do we use that not only to serve our citizens, but also to bring visitors in back to kind of the tourism story? And so we applied for a grant through Three Star and we found out a few weeks ago that we were awarded that grant. We hadn't finalized the contract yet, but it's a ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollar grant. There's no match required and Jesse is leading that particular project and we will be working to use that money to put together, hire a consultant or a company to come in and look at our county, our outdoor resources and put together a master plan for our county and then hopefully have some money left over in that that we can actually start doing some of the execution part of that where it's, whether it's signage or identifying bike trails, hiking trails, those kinds of things. So I want to let you know that was going on. Exit fourteen, I mentioned to you before, but that auction is still scheduled for September twentieth, which is this Saturday. The auction includes a hundred and six acres and it's divided into fifteen tracks. And if you want to see the detail on that, you can go to garnerauctionsinc.com and it has detailed information on the map and how those plaits are laid out, but that'll be this Saturday. Another thing I want to mention to you, and some of you may be aware of this because there's been some public discussion on this already, I know, and I think the property, property committee has discussed this as well. But at the next meeting, y'all will be asked to consider a resolution that's taken a parcel of land out in the Giles County industrial park, so the original industrial park, that's currently sixty-seven acres that's jointly owned by the city and the county. And we have had that land surveyed off and divided up into three tracks. One track is about twelve acres and that's where the two water towers are out on that piece of land. And if you don't know where that is, it's, if you know where Harmon Drive is, right across from Budweiser Distributing, if you go to the end, the dead end of that street, it's that property back behind there in case some of you don't know where that is. So that's been surveyed and divided up into three tracks. There's twelve acres where the two water towers are that the city intends to keep because they have the water towers on it. There's a two point one acre track that's across, I believe it's called Garner Road. It's just a real small track that has a creek running along it, so there's really not anything we can do with that. But it just so happens that parcel is right behind where Sun, where the Sundrop Warehouse is and they're looking right now at wanting to expand their warehouse and so we're going to work, once we get this property transferred over to the Industrial Development Board, to basically sell them that two point one acre track so they can do their expansion. And then that leaves kind of in the center of that property, a fifty-two acre track that the current plan is, we don't think that will ever be suitable for industry because of the topography there. And what we want to do is try to find somebody that may be willing to develop that for housing. And we've got probably two or three different builders from in and outside the area that have expressed interest in doing that. And so the process there is that those tracks would be divided up. City's already passed a resolution. I think they're finalizing that today at their work session. But y'all will be asked to pass a resolution that would basically subdivide it into those three tracks, transfer that over to the Industrial Development Board and then the Industrial Development Board would negotiate with potential builders around developing that. That there will, part of what will come after that is there will, like this will have to go through the planning commission and so there will be plenty of time for public comment. People raise concerns. We're already aware of some concerns that have been raised on that, especially by people that live along Harmon Drive there. And so one of the things we're looking at doing is basically making a part of, of the, of the property that'll be titled with that property that'll say that can never be a through street, Harmon Drive coming into that. We're looking at things like putting a fifty-foot buffer back there so that it kind of separates that from some of those neighborhoods, Sunset Drive, Harmon Drive, others around there. So anyway, some, some thought is already going into that, but I just wanted to at least mention that to you and let you know that that's something that you'll be asked to consider. When you see that resolution, if there are any questions of me, feel free just to shoot me an email, give me a call. I'd be happy to meet with any of you anytime to discuss that. The only other thing I want to mention, well, two other things. One is, we were approached in the last week or ten days or so by two individuals. One is an investor. The other one is a property owner that owns a three hundred fifty acre tract north of the industrial park. So if you go out Campbell's Road, it's kind of off to the right out there. And they are wanting to bring in a solid waste sorting facility there. And that's about all we know about it right now. And so one of the things that we, and I, I don't know if y'all had a chance to talk this more, one of the things we're getting an opinion on right now is, it's my understanding that back in two thousand and three, the city and the county passed, if that's the right term, Jackson Law, which basically says the Rural Planning Commission has to sign off on any of these things, right? So basically what we've told the group that we've met with is that our understanding is they'll have to put together a proposal or a plan for what this facility would look like and then that would have to come before the Rural Planning Commission to evaluate that. So that's about all we know about it right now, but I just at least wanted to mention that to you in case you hear something in the community about that. That's the background. Again, if you want to talk to me about that after the meeting or at any time in the future, reach out to me, give me a call and I'll be happy to talk. The last thing I'll mention is, because I, I had one, at least one question before the meeting from Mr. Carpenter here, is any update on Waffle House? I did reach out to them a couple of weeks ago and, and they claim that they believe they're going to break ground sometime in October, early November, the latest, latest, and that their plan would be to start up or open up sometime in the March, April timeframe. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Carol's got the chair and I need a podium. And Janice, tell me if you can't hear me. I don't have a mic. So what I'm going to start doing, I'm not going to stand there, I need this podium. I'm going to start giving you all a monthly update in each of our commission meetings. It's something I would have liked to have done, but it's hard to do in your chair, so I'll, I'll start giving you a quarterly meeting. The other thing I've talked about with the department heads that work for me is we're going to start doing quarterly reports from our department. So Willow and Josh, next month are going to start us off on the emergency services report. So every month you're going to be hearing some, from some departments, rather than having a committee meeting where we just shoot information at you all at once, you'll hear it here in this, in this meeting. It'll be more publicized that way. Okay. So I got a few things to share. I promise you, this will be my longest monthly update of, of the next year, but there's quite a few things to cover. Number one, I don't know if you've heard Barry Alson, who's on your agenda today and you're going to be approving him as our VSO. He's, we find, health-wise, but he's going to retire in November. So we have a solicitation out to, I can't say replace because he's irreplaceable, but we need to find a new VSO. So that's something I'll be working on with Liz, HR, for the next couple of weeks and we'll, I'll work together with Veteran Services and Barry to help hire his replacement. The Archives Building, you may remember that that's out, that we had that spec, it's out for bid. It was actually bid as a package with some annex upgrades. We got some alarms and cameras that we want to upgrade and door locks to where the entrances to the bank. So that's all part of one package. The bid closing for that is tomorrow. I'll have some more information for you on that the next time we have a building committee meeting. Looking a little further ahead, I want to remind you of the record storage issue. I gave you all a paper on that. It's getting to be an acute problem. So next time we have a building committee meeting, that's scheduled in October, Natalie and, I'm sorry, Crystal are going to come and share with you some of their challenges and we got to come up with a solution for them. And now I'm just going to offer a few reflections as I'm getting ready to step aside as chair. It's taken me three years to kind of get to this conclusion, but I actually, I think I'm going to be more effective working for the people and actually serving you, the commission, when I'm not as serving as the chair. And I've got some reasons for that, but one of them is I, I've been breaking a cardinal rule of leadership for the last three years and that is you never take responsibility without authority. There's a lot of things that I have, I feel like the public thinks I'm responsible for or you think I'm responsible for, but I don't have authority to make those things happen. So we're going to divide up our duties, okay? As chair, I didn't get a vote, I couldn't engage in debate, and I'm still not going to get a vote, but now you're going to hear a little bit more about my opinions on things. You can take them or leave them, but it's really hard. I wonder if y'all's going to be chair and you can't engage in the debate. Your job is to preside. So now I feel like I'll have a little bit more of a voice and you know, when you agree or disagree, you'll know where I stand on things. So the county executive, I don't have any authority over you. You all know that, I know it. It's fuzzy for the public. So that's what's getting clarified today. I'm still one hundred percent committed to working with you guys. We're a team. We just play different positions, right? So that's, that's what I want to make sure that that's clarified. More importantly, I think, I want you all to see this as an opportunity for you all because, and all future commissions, if future county executives decide to keep it separated. About half of the counties in Tennessee do keep it separated. So starting today, your responsibilities and your decisions, you own them a hundred percent. I'm not going to get on Facebook and slam you, as some people like to do. You're responsible for those. I want to help you arrive at the right decisions, but I'm not going to be party to your decisions. All right? So while we're working together as a team, now you all shine based on your own performance. There are certainly challenges that you all face as a commission, but only you all can solve them. And one of, one of the other mistakes I've made, I guess, is I've tried for three years to help you solve those problems. To some of you made sense that I was trying to ram those solutions through, which was not my intent. But I've served in a lot of organizations and I've served in a lot of committees and there's some things that we can improve. There's some things that you all can improve, but only you can improve. So the things that are in your wheelhouse now, if, if you want me to help you, I will help, but otherwise I'll just be praying for you. Okay? So we talked about gridlock, and I've talked about gridlock. It's come up a couple of times in your public comments. That gridlock is structural. It's not personal. Anything that I have to say is not directed at any of you all. This is not a personality issue. Gridlock is, is built into our system. So if the point was made that, hey, it's built into our system with the founding is exactly right. We're not looking for a dictatorship to be super efficient. I get that. But something that's baked into the cake of a twenty-one member commission is gridlock. Okay? And based on Tennessee statute, you're allowed to have between nine and twenty-five members as part of your commission and that's y'all's decision, between nine and twenty-five. Now we have seven districts. It makes sense to go in multiples of seven. But with a commission of twenty-one members and eleven committees, it makes it very difficult, I think, to serve the best interest of Giles County. So I think you could get potentially a lot more accomplished in work sessions rather than committees, but you can't do a work session effectively with twenty-one people and eleven committees, in my opinion. Again, far too many. I'll have to kind of pose it to you with a question, like an example. Why have commissions, successive commissions, been talking about the ambulance service for seventeen years? Okay? Why has it taken us- Why has it taken us three years of gridlock really to come to a determination on how we're going to attack the courthouse renovations? And I would argue that the sticking point isn't money, it's not financial, it's organizational, okay? Let's contrast ourselves with the school board. They've got, they serve Giles County, they're working with a 50% larger budget than what we manage, and they're doing it with seven people. Representative to the people, available to the people, they're moving forward with multimillion-dollar projects, they're making big decisions. So we don't have to agree with all the decisions of the school board, other than to see that they're making progress. And that's a good thing, they're responsible to the public needs. Another example that we all need to look at is our recent budget. Piasco, for lack of a better word. And when I say piasco, I'm not talking about the tax increase or the $1.9 million shortfall. I'm talking about our process to get to the solution that we ended up backing ourselves into. So those departmental budgets that we had sailed through eight different committees, and holding those meetings cost thousands of dollars. And after we got through those 24 hours of eight different committee meetings, we didn't have a solution that served the public, and it didn't even, it couldn't get full commission support. That's because your commission, or I'm sorry, your committees are made up of seven members, one-third of your full commission, and those committees are not representative of your committee or commission consensus. So it's clear that seven members are not representative of the commission and certainly not on the contentious issues. So this budget demonstrated that the existing committee system, in my opinion, it's broken, and particularly on the contentious issues. This is why I believe reducing the size of the commission is a practical solution that better serves the public. I wish it could be better put to the people. I've asked this so many times, like, I wish, on this and several other decisions, I wish we could put it on a referendum, let the people decide, let's have a big public discussion, and let the people vote on it. You know, Tennessee law doesn't give us that privilege or that right. There's only taxation issues and liquor by the drink. Those are the things that we can put on a referendum. So this is something the commission does have to decide. Y'all are the representatives of the people, so this is your decision. I would argue, again, 14 members allows for a very manageable debate and a work session. We have 21 members that come, and they show up at meetings. Seven of them have a vote, 21 may show up, but that makes for a very challenging way to hold a debate amongst 21 people. If you've been there, you've seen it. I think if we went to 14, all 14 could serve on a committee, on each committee, and making those committees truly representative of the full commission. There would be two commissioners per district, 14 total, still gives the public multiple commissioner options to contact for their advocacy, right? As a matter of fact, I think you all know, if you've got a commissioner in X district and you feel like you want to call somebody in Y district, you can do that, and it would be the same way with 14. The contentious issues still get publicly debated, and the organization would be streamlined, efficient, but not dictatorial, and it would still be representative of the people. And let's be clear, efficient doesn't mean, 14 people who are representative of the people, you're not going to be able to ram through tax increases that the people don't want. 14 people, it's going to be streamlined only because 14 people can have their voice heard a lot easier than a group of 21. So that's the kind, I want you all to be effective. I want you all, beyond my term, I want to see the commission get good things done for Giles County. And I think it's been systemic with 21 people, and I've given you some examples as to why I think it's systemic, and I'd like our successors to be handling something a little bit better that they can serve the people. Okay. I'm going to shift gears completely. I had no idea what Mr. Reedy was going to pray, and I thank Caleb for your comments, but I cannot close without mentioning the recent tragedies that affected all of us very deeply. They affected me very personally, and they still do. They affect us as a community and as a nation. Just days ago, we marked the 24th anniversary of 9/11. I was in DC that day, and like all of you, I'm sure, I think everybody's old enough here, maybe a couple of you aren't, you remember where you were. I remember those grisly images, and airliners turned into weapons of war. And ever since, we've all carried the vow to never forget. But new tragedies remind us that our country is challenged by evil. 23-year-old Ukrainian refugee, we just mentioned her, came to America seeking safety from a war, murdered while riding a train in Charlotte. Last Wednesday, Charlie Kirk was assassinated. And whatever your politics, he was a young man committed to peacefully contending for the truth in the public square. He saw open debate, and yet he was silenced by a bullet because someone found him offensive. And then that same day in Colorado, another school shooting, where two students were injured, and I think the gunman was killed. These tragedies happen in North Carolina, Utah, Colorado, but do they have any relevance for us here in Giles County? And I would say absolutely yes. We all just pledged allegiance to our nation's flag. We all just said we're indivisible. And when we see our country getting pulled apart, and our national debate devolving into political violence, you better believe it affects all of us. These attacks, whether against the Twin Towers or individual Americans, are attacks on our republic, they're attacks on liberty, they're attacks on all of us as one nation under God. So how should we respond? Well, we prayed, and that's good. For another start, don't shrug it off. Where are we going to be two or three weeks from now? Probably caught up in our routines, but I would maintain that you should never forget what's happened over these last couple of weeks. It's the most natural thing in the world for civilized Americans to lament and pray for justice and hold fast to one another, united as neighbors and as community members. We'll certainly never agree on everything, but part of our heritage as a fellow Southerner is that we're neighborly, or I used to think so. Too often these days, we see heated rhetoric turn into rage, and then, just as we saw, spiral into violence, and that just doesn't happen in other places. It could happen here. It's happened here before. As a community, we have to be indivisible in stating that politicized rage is unacceptable. Differences of opinion, very healthy, necessary, because we're a free society. But we also need to tone down our rhetoric here at home. Unfortunately, we have a handful of agitators who hide behind their keyboards, gleefully stirring outrage and division. Call it free speech if you want. I call it pathetic, destructive, and beneath the dignity of this community. And as we just observed, these agitations can quickly spiral into something worse. So if tragedy teaches us anything, it's that we do not meet darkness with darkness. We have to rise above it by standing together, debating honestly, disagreeing respectfully, and still working side by side for the common good. I believe Giles County has the strength and the moral character to show what it means, what it really looks like to be indivisible. Benjamin Franklin, you remember what question he was asked when he came out of the Constitutional Convention? What kind of government did we get? And he said, "A republic, if you can keep it." We have to do our part to keep it right here at home, and that's our job as a commission, is my job as county executive, so let's make it happen together. Thank you.
The next former business is relation of chairman. Our present chairman is Graham Stowe, and this is the nomination.
Matthew Hopkins.
Carol, do you need help?
I guess I could go help.
This looks like it's going to get busy.
I guess it's my duty to help a friend.
What do you do here?
Oh, my only act is a pro-tem.
Yeah.
Shelly goes first.
Who was that nominating second? That Evan Levonetti?
Terry Jones.
Terry Jones.
And who did that?
Shelly.
I nominate David Wamboldt.
Any other nominations?
Make the motion, nomination ceases.
Second.
We got a second, yes.
I think you should say something.
I mean, are we allowed to hear from the nominees just briefly? As to why they want to position or what they consider to the table?
I don't know why not.
Just briefly?
Yeah.
Make the motion to do it.
I make the motion that we hear from the nominees briefly to...
Wait, we need a voice vote first on stating of nominating Stacy. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, Karen.
I make the motion that we hear from the nominees and briefly as to why you'd like to position or what they think you're into the table.
Second, from Roger Reed.
I'm going to give you five minutes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Two minutes or less.
Two minutes or less. Is that...
Two minutes or less sounds good.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Matthew. Mr. Hopkins.
I hear quite all right. I'm already called off, garden's dead, so I need that 30 seconds. If this body wants me to serve, I'm willing to do so, then, I'm looking at it this way. Whoever serves needs to be able to worry more about keeping in order in this commission, following the rules, regulations, knowing Robert's Rules of Order, and not worrying about being able to make commentary, as Mr. Stowe already made the point. Whoever's sitting up there in that chair needs to be concerned with the rules of order and keeping things moving. It's not about grandstanding, it's not about speaking your mind. So whoever takes that position and is willing to do so, if the body wants me to, I'm fairly well-versed with Robert's Rules of Order, and I'm well-versed with our own rules, and I'm happy to follow those and keep my personal comments out. But whoever takes it, keep in mind, you can't make those comments all the time. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Jones, Mr. Bedouin.
But when Graham put out an email the other night to the entire commission, there was a few days there, and it was, it was right during the charter curt thing, and I was downed out, and nobody, I guess everybody else was too, and we didn't respond to his email or nothing like that. And then a few days later, I did respond, and I would be willing to take on that job, and I still would be willing to take on that job. And I'm in, I'm in good company with the ones that's also willing to take that job. I can't say that I'd bring any more or anything different than anyone else to that table. Be a chairman job, it's not a county executive job, it's just a chair, just like any other chair of any other committee, you've got the ways that you're supposed to do it, and I know how to do it, and that's what I'm working to the table. I have no problem if one of the other three get, they're very well timed. Thank you.
Shelly goes first.
Okay, I'm bringing to the table a history of being the president of the Giles County Education Association, where I've used Robert's Rules of Order quite frequently. And I am also been chairman of several committees. I just feel like I have the personality and the calmness where I could just hopefully keep everything to an even keel, keep everything moving, and I'm okay with not being part of the discussion. That is fine with me. If everybody wishes a vote for me, I appreciate your vote. Pretty much, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We didn't hear who nominated Shelly.
I did, and I was leaving my desk.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Wong.
You know, I would be honored to chair the commission. Obviously, I'm running for county executive, I feel like I'm running for that position. I think I have the ability to effectively manage every meeting. I've chaired just about every commission committee that I've been on, and I would like to offer you to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Bedouin.
I would also be pleased to serve, even though I know the responsibility is greater. Either way, no hard feelings, if you don't vote for me, I understand. Mr. Hopkins is right as to grandstanding. I have been guilty of even grandstanding on a handful of occasions over the past three years, and almost immediately after, I had felt immature about it and sort of wishing I had taken the higher road. So I am willing and able to set aside strong opinions and simply administer meetings. And as an attorney, I have to follow procedural rules, and, you know, I've served as chair of Legislative Committee and the Audit Committee, and I hope that you've observed, at least when I am chair in meetings, that I do take an impartial administrative approach and don't try to steer conversations either way, but thank you.
Thank y'all. Okay, so we'll go around, roll call, voice, say who you're voting for. First one to 11 becomes chair. If we don't get 11, we'll vote again. Hurry. Yes.
We've got one that has stepped out for a minute, I guess probably for a restroom break, and we've been here for an hour. I'm sure there may be some others. Can we take a five-minute recess and then come back and vote?
Yeah, it's six hours forward, let's be back at 16:00.
Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at (931) 347-9150, or visit haneyrealtypem.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mstaffing.net or give us a call today at (931) 347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit pesenergize.com or call us today.
Homes to Insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at winterbourninsurance.com or call us at (931) 363-8638.
Department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today. Get a quote today at winterboroinsurance.com or call us at nine three one three six three eight six three eight.
Department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to fifty to sixty percent less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
You got a fine job, Aaron.
Thank you. I was just asking.
Thank you for your confidence, and we will move on down to the agenda. The next election will be for Chairman Pro Tem. Ms. Curry?
I'd like to nominate Shelly Goolsbee.
Tracey?
Nominate Karen Jones.
There you go. Any other nominations? Now, the motion for nominations to cease.
So moved.
Seconded by... Played by Tracey. We'll do a round call. Voice vote. Voice vote in all those in favor of nominations cease.
Ah!
Ms. Curry?
Goolsbee.
Dr. Michael?
Goolsbee.
Ms. Woodard?
Goolsbee.
Mr. Jones?
Jones.
Walton?
Jones.
Mr. Wilber?
Jones.
Mr. Adams?
Jones.
Ms. Guthrie?
Jones.
Mr. Carpenter?
Jones.
Ms. Hocken?
Jones.
Mr. Brady?
Goolsbee.
Mr. Savage?
Honorable Terry Jones.
Mr. Butler?
Jones.
Mr. Jones?
Jones.
Mr. Rubelson?
Goolsbee.
Mr. Bedouin?
Goolsbee.
Mr. Sutton? I'm sorry, Ms. Bryant?
Goolsbee.
Mr. Sutton?
Goolsbee.
Ms. Goozey?
Goolsbee.
Ms. Pruitt?
Goolsbee.
Or Ms. Bryant?
Goolsbee.
Ms. Guthrie?
Thank you. Appreciate you guys. Thank you all.
Thanks for the votes. Next election will be that for Chaplin. Now, open the floor for nominations. Mr. Rubelson?
Roger Reedy.
Ms. Bryant? Cease. Who? Nomination cease. Nomination cease. Do I have a second or three seconds?
No, I have a nomination.
Reedy's got a nomination.
So do I.
Okay.
Ms. Brady?
Okay. I wanted to nominate Kevin. The old man got this Christian faith. He can't speak. He's a worthy person. So I'll just nominate him from the yellow side.
Jones?
I'll finish this then.
Now, we're taking the motion for nominations to cease. Motion by Adele, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll do a voice vote.
Who are the options?
Options are Mr. Brady, Mr. Savage, and Mr. Sutton. And I assume all three are willing?
Yep.
Ms. Curry? Brady. Dr. Laiter?
Brady.
Joyce? Ms. Woodard?
Brady.
Mr. Jones?
Savage.
Walton?
Savage.
Mr. Wilber?
Savage.
Mr. Adams?
Caleb. Caleb.
Ms. Guthrie?
Caleb.
Mr. Carpenter?
Savage.
Mr. Hocken?
Mr. Savage.
Mr. Brady?
Stain.
Mr. Savage?
Oh, Savage.
Mr. Butler?
Savage.
Mr. Jones?
Sutton.
Sutton.
Mr. Rubelson?
Brady.
Mr. Bedouin?
Brady.
Ms. Bryant?
Sutton.
Mr. Sutton?
Joseph Truitt.
Ms. Guthrie?
Sutton.
Ms. Pruitt?
Brady.
Ms. Bryant?
Brady. Mr. Savage? Mr. Savage is our chaplain. Okay, now, you have eleven. All right, so Mr. Sutton's name will drop off, and now we'll choose between Brady and Savage.
Ms. Curry? Brady. Dr. Laiter?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything. Somebody else. What are we voting on?
We're...we're on Chaplin. Mr. Sutton was the lowest, so we're down to Brady and Caleb Savage.
Brady.
Ms. Woodard?
Brady.
Mr. Jones?
Savage.
Savage.
Mr. Wilber?
Savage.
Mr. Adams?
Savage.
Ms. Guthrie?
Savage.
Mr. Carpenter?
Savage.
Mr. Hocken?
Savage.
Mr. Brady?
Stain.
Mr. Savage?
Savage.
Mr. Butler?
Savage.
Mr. Jones?
Savage.
Mr. Rubelson?
Brady.
Mr. Bedouin?
Brady.
Ms. Bryant?
Brady.
Mr. Sutton?
Brady.
Ms. Guthrie?
Brady.
Ms. Pruitt?
Brady.
Ms. Bryant?
Brady.
Okay, we have a time. Would you now, if you know more, have a time where we can vote? Last one turning, now we end with... Okay, we're going to re-vote. I'm still gonna need some...one party to change their vote.
It's up to you, but you need to vote for yourself.
Oh, you're abstaining?
We...we can't do that.
Have you two come in and put in between yourselves?
Let's count the ballots.
I'm gonna withdraw. Thank you, Mr. Savage and Mr. Brady will now be our chaplain.
Next word of business is election of nominees public at large. We have the following regulations. They're Donald Wayne Crawford, Janet L. Garner, Bailey Holmes, and Tina Thornton. Their nominee nominees are Megan Myers, Michelle, Hopkins, Goozey, and Jennifer R. E.
I'll make the motion to approve. Motion by Terry Jones, seconded by Evan Bedouin. Uh, in discussion, Ms. Guthrie.
Just letting y'all know, I am in abstaining because then Michelle, Hopkins, Goozey, is me.
Okay, all of us will voice vote. All those in favor of approving the new and the reelection of the nominees, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
The next word of business is committees. And each of you has a chief, and I guess I hope you know which committee you want to be on. Usually, uh... We'll start with the budget committee, or the audit committee. Whoever wants to be on that, please stand up.
Hey.
Go ahead.
I can't hear nothing. I don't know about the rest of these people. Thank you. We ain't got no microphones working.
Get closer to it, yes.
I will say, Brad knows this, I can't hear y'all either.
Okay, sir.
We'll try to get closer to the microphone.
So everybody?
They can use your mic.
They can use your mic, and every representative is standing from the audit committee. I'll take nominations for chairman.
No, we don't have...
Nominate Aaron Curry.
Nominate Aaron Curry. Everybody like to mo...do we need a motion for nominations to cease? And like Ms. Curry by affirmation?
I'd make so.
So, Evan, seconded by Ms. Pruitt. So, Aaron is the chairman. Nominations for vice chairman? Ms. Curry?
Commissioner Hopkins.
Mr. Hopkins. Motion for nominations to cease. Salute by Mr. Bedouin. Mr. Hopkins is the vice chairman. Nominations for secretary?
Brown.
We have Brad Butler nominated. Any other nominations?
All curators.
We just made the motion for nominations to cease. And for Brad to be elected by affirmation. That's all the committee. Which committee would you say? Let me see, next. Nominations for chairman? Mr. Hopkins?
Michael Belski.
Okay, give it just...just a second. Okay, so we've nominated Michael Belski. Been nominated for... James. Evan Bedouin. And Evan Bedouin. Okay, so your options are...motion for nominations to cease?
Make a motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So you'll lead a vote for Rubelski or Bedouin. Dr. Laiter?
Rubelski.
Bedouin? David?
Matt. Matt Bedouin.
Rubelski.
Rubelski. The man right there. Matt Bedouin. Too much going on. He'll reach one of my half a vote.
Just make sure, ladies, vote for Bedouin.
Yeah.
And Hopkins?
Rubelski.
Rubelski?
I'm saying.
Bedouin? Rubelski? Goozey?
Bedouin.
We have three, three times. All right, let's re-vote.
I will draw. Let Adam flag it.
All right, Bedouin is the chairman. Nominations for vice chairman? Sorry, Laiter?
Rubelski.
Rubelski. I'll entertain a motion for nominations to cease?
One more nomination.
I hope we have another nomination.
Goozey.
More nominations? Motion for nominations to cease? All those in favor, say aye. So you'll be voting for Rubelski or Goozey for vice chairman. Dr. Laiter?
Rubelski.
Goozey?
Goozey.
David?
Goozey.
Rubelski.
I'm staying.
Evan Bedouin?
Rubelski.
And Goozey?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Rubelski is the vice chairman. I'll entertain nominations for secretary.
Nominate Hopkins. I nominate Hopkins.
Nominations to cease?
I've already nominated Ms. Goozey, so it's all good.
We have two nominations, Goozey and Hopkins. All right, so for secretary, your options are Goozey or Hopkins, Dr. Laiter?
Hopkins.
Jones?
Ms. Goozey.
Seconded out? Secretary?
Goozey or Hopkins?
He said Goozey. He said...he said Goozey. Goozey. Goozey.
Bedouin? Hopkins, because he brings his computer. Yeah, and Goozey.
Hopkins.
True. He's still one. All right, uh, for nominations for chairman? Let's get federal justice up and get this all out. Ms. Bedouin?
Nominate Ms. Curry.
I'm nominating Caleb.
Make the motion for nominations to cease?
Motion for nominations to cease? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So your choices are Curry or Savage. Ms. Curry?
Curry.
Savage.
Ms. Gutt.
Savage.
Mr. Savage?
Savage.
Mr. Butler?
Curry.
Mr. Bedouin?
Curry.
Ms. Pruitt?
Curry.
Ms. Curry, you are chairman, thank you. Nominations for vice chairman? Tracey?
Caleb.
Most nominated to cease. Motion for nominations to cease? David Savage will be elected by affirmation. So, secretary, Tracey. Judy over there. Ms. Pruitt?
I got one. Mr. Wilber?
Ms. Curry?
Mr. Wilber.
I move that nominations cease.
Nominations to cease. Second.
I just want to point out, our secretary was done. Nobody liked the way I did it, so...
Well, Lois does it.
I know. I have not agreed.
All right, so your choices are... Brady or... President Wilber. So, Ms. Curry?
Wilber.
Ms. Pruitt? Pruitt.
Pruitt.
Pruitt. Caleb? Judy over there. Brad?
Wilber.
Mr. Bedouin?
Pruitt.
Good job, but she's still one, Bruce. You are the secretary, thank you. Emergency service? Nominations for chairman? Chair. Okay, they'll give us just a second. Yes, Mr. Savage.
What committee you are on?
We are emergency services.
Which one's that?
There need a significant...
Brady?
Oh. Who's in suit? Mr. Savage. Nominations for chairman? Chair, Dr. Laiter? Savage. Any other nominations? Motion for nominations to cease? And Caleb will be elected by affirmation. Savage is the chairman. Nominations for vice chairman? Mr. Savage?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Laiter.
Dr. Laiter has been nominated for vice chairman. Motion for nominations to cease? Dr. Laiter? Elected by affirmation. Secretary?
Nominate Carmen Brown.
I'd like to be secretary, thank you.
All right, motion for... Motion to cease if he wants it.
Yep.
All right, Carmen, that's a second.
Carmen, that's my shirt.
I would be happy to.
Love me. Next is environmental. Environmental nominations are... Nominations for chairman for nominations.
Make a motion, share the goods.
Share with Ms. Goozey. Any other nominations? Mr. Wilber?
Make a motion, nominations to cease.
Ms. Goozey? Ms. Goozey is elected by affirmation. Nominations for vice chairman? Ms. Goozey?
I nominate Roger Reedy.
Mr. Wilber?
Make a motion, nominations to cease.
All right, nominations to cease. Mr. Brady is elected by affirmation. Nominations for secretary?
Thank you, Shelly. At least I didn't get nominated for secretary.
Ms. Goozey?
I nominate Tracey.
I make the motion, nominations to cease. They were elected by...
Oh, you think that? Chair. Your second half? Yeah. All right, Mr. Wilber, congratulations, you are a new secretary.
Man, I don't want...
Next is the highway committee. Highway committee?
I nominate the highway committee.
Joyce.
All right, nominations for chairman of the highway committee? Mr. Brady?
I make a motion for Tracey Wilber.
Wilber? I have a motion for that. Motion for nominations to cease, and Mr. Wilber be...
Cease.
All right, so a motion by Rubelski, seconded by Mr. Brady. Mr. Wilber is the chairman. Nominations for vice chairman?
Carmen Brown.
Brown? Motion for nominations to cease by Mr. Wilber, seconded by... Somebody seconded? Seconded by Mr. Brady. Mr. Brown is our vice chairman. The highway committee. Nominations for secretary? Mr. Wilber?
Ms. Joyce.
Ms. Joyce? Nominations to cease. I need a second here. Seconded by Mr. Wilber. Joyce, congratulations, you are the secretary of the highway committee. And welcome back. Nominations for chairman?
Hopkins.
I'll nominate you.
I'm going to chair this.
Okay, come how man. Matthew Hopkins.
Ms. Hopkins has been nominated for chairman. Hushford?
I move that motion. I move that nomination cease and he will be elected by affirmation.
Okay. Motion nominated, gentlemen, give me a second.
It's back in.
Mr. Hopkins. And that's Mr. Hopkins is... Insurance, right? Yeah, chairman of insurance, he's the chairman. Vice chairman of insurance committee?
Who is the chairman?
Joyce?
I nominate Gayle.
I nominate Gayle for vice chairman. So I'd like to make a motion for nominations to cease. Motion by Ms. Hopkins, nominations to cease, and Gayle will be elected by affirmation, seconded by... Seconded by Ms. Woodard. Congratulations, Gayle, you're vice chairman. Now, we'll have nominations for secretary. Joyce?
Okay. Joe Sutton.
Mr. Sutton has been nominated for secretary.
Nominations to cease?
Ms. Hopkins has made a motion for nominations to cease, and Mr. Savage... Ms. Hopkins has made a motion for nomination cease, and Mr. Sutton will be elected by affirmation, seconded by... Ms. Jones. All right, next we have law enforcement committee, just a second. Okay, law enforcement committee, nominations for... Gale?
I nominate Becky Hopkins.
Chairman, any other nominations?
Make a motion nomination cease.
And Mr. Hopkins will be elected by affirmation, seconded by... Hopkins is chairman, nominations for vice chairman? Ms. Joyce? I'm gonna pass, because I'm gonna focus on this position, but thank you.
I nominate Carmen.
Do you say?
I make motion that nomination cease, and Commissioner Carpenter will be elected by affirmation.
Motion by Ms. Jones, seconded by... Ms. Rose Brown. Call her to be vice chairman. All right, secretary nominations?
I nominate Jones.
Ms. Jones? Any others? Make even motion.
Make motion nomination cease.
Ms. Brown made motion nomination cease, these gentlemen will be elected by affirmation, seconded by Mr. Hopkins. Next is legislative committee. Ms. Curry?
Nominate Bedore.
Ms. Jones?
Obstacle with Bedore.
Ms. Jones?
Bedore.
All right, we'll make a motion.
A motion to cease.
Motion for, uh, Mr. Savage for vice chairman. Force cease, and so will Mr. Gilby, elected by affirmation. Motion for vice chairman? Ms. Governor?
Aaron.
Motion for nomination cease by Mr. Brown, and Aaron being elected by affirmation, seconded by Mr. Bedore. Secretary? Ms. Jones?
I nominate Commissioner Guthrie.
Ms. Guthrie?
Yes, I nominate Gale.
Nominations for Brown? We'll name a voice vote, your choices are Guthrie or Jones. Ms. Curry, continue.
Jones.
Mr. Jones?
Jones.
Ms. Guthrie?
Jones.
Mr. Savage?
I don't want to get involved, I'm gonna stay.
Ms. Jones?
Guthrie.
Ms. Bedore? Jones. Which one? Jones. Overwhelmingly takes the vice. Congratulations, gentlemen, you're the secretary. Next is public service. Ms. Reed?
I make a motion for you to nominate Kevin Bedore.
Any other nominations? Ms. Jones?
I move that nomination cease, to be elected by affirmation.
Seconded by... Mr. Brown. Motion by Ms. Jones. Nominations, Mr. Bedore will be the chairman of public service. Now, you'll take nominations for vice chairman. Ms. Jones?
Carmen Brown.
Motion for nominations cease. By Ms. Guthrie, and Ms. Brown be elected by affirmation, seconded by Ms. Jones. You'll take nominations for secretary? Yes, Ms. Reed?
Gale, Jones.
Ms. Jones?
I nominate Commissioner Reed.
I move that nomination cease.
Motion for nomination cease by Ms. Guthrie, seconded by... So your choices are... Your choices.
Our choices are Reed and Gale.
Yeah. Ms. Joyce?
Roger.
I think Gale's already got two, so I'll let Roger have a little something.
Ms. Guthrie?
Roger.
Ms. Reed?
Jones.
Ms. Jones?
Mr. Reed.
Mr. Bedore?
Mr. Reed.
Ms. White? Mr. Reed. Congratulations, Mr. Reed. Secretary of Public Service. Next, we'll make the schools, ma'am. I'll entertain nomination for chairman. Judy Pruitt. Ms. Pruitt's been nominated. I'll entertain a motion for nomination cease. Uh, Mr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Carpenter. Ms. Pruitt will be elected by affirmation. Nomination for vice chairman? Mr. Rabelson?
Ray Carpenter.
Mr. Carpenter. I'll entertain a motion for... Cease. By Mr. Hopkins. Seconded by Mr. Rabelson. Mr. Carpenter is the vice chairman. Entertained motion for secretary?
Chair Jones.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the nomination. Motion cease? All right, motion to cease by... My lead seconded by... Mr. Rabelson.
Here, tell them.
Okay, so I need a motion and a second to approve all the nominations for all the committees. Motion by Ms. Gilby, seconded by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? Please vote.
I say yep.
Carpenter is a yes, so it is you next. All right, we have the committee assignments ready to work.
The next election is the beer board. The election, this is the odd year, so you're elected in districts 1, 3, 5, and 7. President members are James Lightruf, David Adams, Fred Butler, and Chili Booth.
I'll entertain nominations for, entertain a motion to approve these four names.
All four names? I was gonna nominate David.
He's...
All four of them.
Okay, so a motion, motion by Ms. Guthrie to approve these four names, seconded by Mr. Hopkins. Any discussion? Say your name? Please vote.
She was here for me, you know.
I'm doing yes.
Carpenter is a yes. Right, it is you next.
The next, the next election is for the county attorney. Uh, the county attorney is appointed upon a one-year term, expiring September 30, 2025. President county attorney is Chris Williams.
I'll entertain motions for county attorney. Ms. Curry?
I'd like to nominate Chris Williams.
David Adams?
I'd nominate Richard Donley.
Okay, motion for nominations cease. Motion by Terry Jones, seconded by Mr. Hopkins. We'll do another voice roll call, but... Commissioners like to hear from each of the candidates?
Not necessarily.
We'll move the roll call, but...
Ms. Curry? Williams. Dr. Lightruf?
Chris Williams.
Ms. Woodard?
Williams.
Ms. Jones?
Williams. Williams.
Ms. Wilber?
Donovan.
Mr. Adams?
Donovan.
Ms. Guthrie? Richard. Ms. Carpenter?
Donovan Williamson.
Ms. Hopkins?
Donovan.
Ms. Reed?
Williams.
Mr. Savage?
Williams.
Ms. Butler?
Williams.
Ms. Jones?
Donovan.
Ms. Rabelson?
Williams.
Mr. Bedore?
Williams.
Ms. Brown?
Williams.
Mr. Sutton?
Williams.
Ms. Guthrie?
Williams.
Ms. Pruitt?
Williams.
And Ms. Frank?
Williams.
Sixteen five, Mr. Williams W.
The next election is the county financial management committee. The present members are Brinkstone, the county executive Dickie Beard, who is the director of schools, and Jean Barnicle, who's the highway superintendent. They are appointed to this committee by statute. The chairman of the special committee is appointed to this committee by the rules of court. The U. R. should elect three members for the special committee. Present members are David Wall, Tracy Wilber, and Matthew Hopkins.
What are the wishes of the commission, Ms. Jones?
Uh, keep the present ones, yeah.
Is the motion to keep the present ones? Seconded by...
I move, uh, to put in Eric Curry.
I can't hear you.
I move, uh, to put Eric Curry on the committee.
Eric Curry's been nominated? We need a second for that nomination. Second. Yeah, Mr. Bedore seconded. Any other nominations? Web, Ms. Jones?
Do I need to pull my nom, my, uh... Do I need to pull my... Because I had asked for it.
Yeah, no, she's seconded.
There was a second.
Is there a discussion on his motion, Burke? Would you like to draw this motion?
I, I didn't know if anybody else wanted it. No, I'll, I'll keep my motion.
I'll second his motion to keep present.
Ms. Jones' motion was to keep the current three, and seconded by Caleb Savage.
Correct.
And Mr.... Yes, all right, discussion on the motion.
My observation is that each year it has changed. It was three two years ago, that changed to a new three last year. I just want us to be aware that that's at least been the trend so far. Not saying there's anything wrong with the current research, just... Just wanted to add the context.
Mr. Savage?
Uh, my question was just, Mr. Wall, would you wish to continue serving on this committee?
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
With that, Mr. Bedore said, uh, we had no problem with beer board. We kept everybody safe as it was on beer board, so... And we could have changed it, so I'm, I'm okay with... If these three want to continue to do it, and find that... If they want to change it, like, change one or two, I don't care.
I really don't care.
But my vision, but my thing is, we didn't do it on beer board, we still gonna keep the beer board and all of them, and save them.
All bits will be nominated. We're gonna vote for the top three, we'll all decide on this. Ms. Joyce?
These three all you can have?
Yes, Ms. Curry?
I believe it's correct that they don't all three have to be commissioners. We, we've had people from citizens serve on this committee too. I know, um, Patrick Gilbert was on it for a while.
Mr. Bedore?
I just want to make sure, my understanding was that the county executive made the appointment, appointment recommendations for first year of his term, and then the second year of his term. And I just would like clarification on, has he made recommendations as to this next year? Because I think it's his...
Mr. Bedore, would you take the voting and point this?
So I, I don't make appointments to the, um, to this board. Like I would for ethics, that comes up next, but not this one. That's all a few more.
Okay, so we have, we have multiple motions, I think we need to act on Mr. Jones' motion to keep these three, but it really needs to be voted down, so that Ms. Curry can have a vote. So we're looking at this, you nominated three? Hey, Dr. Lightruf nominated two. So go ahead, Ms. Jones, flicking your mic.
David, I'll change by nomination, go add Aaron to the, and let's do the vote, make it fair for everybody. If anybody else wants to nominate someone, I'll let them go ahead and nominate, but I have no problem with that, and let's do the, let's do the vote.
Okay, Mr. Savage, your second?
No, uh, so just from my outside perspective, I don't think that one person can nominate more people than can fill a board, so I don't believe one person can nominate four people. I have to ask Mr. Williams for clarification, but I don't think he could do that.
I'm not aware of any limitation on the number of people that can be nominated, or it's one, it's her one, especially if you're three seats. Ms. Jones?
Yeah, can we just clear and start over, and I'll nominate Tracy.
You, you're withdrawing your motion.
We'll start over, and I'll nominate Tracy Williams.
Do we have one nomination, Tracy Wilber?
So, my nomination still starts.
Dr. Lightrow does nominate Ms. Currie. Taylor.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Matthew Hopkins.
Ms. Jones.
I'll nominate Commissioner Womble.
Okay, so we, voting for nominations ceases. I'll be talking, seconded by Ms. Pruitt.
Clarification, please. Are we eliminating the three that are on here now and starting over?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're voting for three of the four that have been nominated.
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha.
Okay, so your choices are Curry, Wilber, Hopkins, and Womble, the top three. They'll have a seat on the Financial Management Committee. After eleven votes. Ms. Currie, what's your second?
Um, Wilbur, Hopkins, and Curry.
Dr. Lightrow. Womble, Curry, and Hopkins. Ms. Woodard.
Womble, Wilbur, and Curry.
Ms. Jones.
Wilbur, Hopkins, Womble.
I'll vote Wilbur, Hopkins, Womble. Mr. Wilber.
Womble, Hopkins, and Wilbur.
Mr. Adams.
Williams, Hopkins, and Womble.
Ms. Guthrie.
Both Wilbur.
Wilbur, Hopkins, Womble, that is correct.
Yes.
Ms. Guthrie.
Womble, Wilbur, and Hopkins.
Ms. Carter.
Curry, Wilbur, and Hopkins.
Ms. Hopkins.
Womble, Hopkins, Curry.
Mr. Reed.
Curry, Hopkins, Womble.
Ms. Savage.
Uh, Womble, Wilbur, and Hopkins.
Curry, Womble, Hopkins.
Ms. Jones.
Womble, Wilbur, Hopkins.
And Mr. Rupes.
Wilbur, Hopkins, and Curry.
Mr. Bedouin.
Wilbur, Curry, and Hopkins.
Ms. Brown.
Curry, Wilbur, and Womble.
Ms. Savage.
Curry, Wilbur, Hopkins.
Ms. Guthrie.
Curry. Hopkins, and Wilbur.
Ms. Pruitt.
Womble, Curry, Hopkins.
Ms. Brown.
Curry, Wilbur, Hopkins.
You got a three-way tie.
Okay, so Womble, Curry, guys. We'll vote again, and the options will be Womble and Curry this time.
What was the tally?
Now, we had the top number. We had the two top.
Yeah, the top two are, um, Wilbur and Hopkins.
Oh, okay.
Y'all tied. Aaron and, and, uh, David tied. Y'all both got fourteen.
Okay, okay, okay.
Have a vote off.
So, Wilbur and Hopkins are definitely, we'll leave them with ties for fourth place, third place. So, we'll vote again between Ms. Currie and myself. Ms. Currie.
Curry.
We'll vote Lightrow between.
Oh, man. Womble.
Ms. Woodard.
I have to tell the woman, Curry.
And all I forgot, Womble. Wilbur.
Womble.
Well, I did, but I'll vote for myself. And we're down to David Adams.
Womble.
Take your vote. Ms. Guthrie.
Womble.
Ms. Carter.
Curry. Womble.
Ms. Carter votes Womble. Mr. Reed.
Curry.
Ms. Savage.
Uh, Womble.
Ms. Butler.
Curry.
Ms. Jones.
Womble.
Mr. Rupes.
Curry.
Ms. Bedouin.
Curry.
Ms. Brown.
Curry.
Mr. Sutton.
Curry.
Ms. Guthrie.
Curry.
Ms. Pruitt.
Curry.
Ms. Brown.
Curry.
I believe Ms. Currie will be the third member of the Financial Management Committee. By the management.
Member for Perkins. Curry, Wilbur, and Hopkins. And the next, the next selection is Edinson Title Sees Committee. The four seats are Edith Bedouin, Rose Brown, Erin Curry, Jill Lightrow, and Tommy Wright.
Ms. Ms. Guthrie.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, seconded by Mr. Reed. Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Vote is twenty eyes and one F tie. The next selection is Banner and Service Officer. Our present officer is Barry Austin, and the term of office is one year.
Motion approved. Motion approved by Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Wilber. Any discussion? Alright, please vote.
Vote is twenty-one eyes. And the next, the next order of business is reports, and today's reports are the Josh County Finance Director's Report for July of twenty twenty-five, which includes the following. Josh County General Fund, Drug, American Rescue Plan, Prohibition Fund, Highway, Schools, Federal Food Service, Dent Service, Capital Projects, Highway Capital Projects, Education Cap, excuse me, Capital Projects, Education Captain Number Two, and other capital projects. Excuse me. Com, colors acknowledgement, I received a certified copy of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, the fiscal strength, and a fishing. Fiscal strength, uh, sorry. Efficient government fiscal confirmation letter, which is part of the three, our concrete requirements, and the county executive September report.
What are the wishes of the commission? Ms. Savage.
I'd like to make a motion to vote on the, all of the reports, as well as the contracts, agreements, and grants in one vote.
Seven.
We have a motion to add to our reports to get weekly contracts, agreements, and grants. Is there a second? Yes, sir. Seconded by Mr. Bedouin. Any discussion? Ms. Reed.
Believe you will have to read those out, Mr. Reed, leave it.
Would you use your microphone?
Believe you will have to read out the government grants.
I will.
In order to read.
The con, the contracts are broadband, rate, and grant for the libraries, senior center, and chamber. That's a term from ten fourteen twenty-four to ten thirty-one twenty-six. Health Department ARP Grant Amendment Two. That term is one thirteen twenty-three to six thirty twenty-six. And Act of Health and Environment Grant, that term is nine one twenty-five to six thirty twenty-seven.
Okay, so the motion is to combine the reports, and the contracts, and the vote, and approve them all at once. We have a motion on Mr. Savage, and a second by Ms. Guthrie. Any discussion? Alright, please vote. Ms. Wilber.
David, we vote to combine, or we vote to approve?
We vote to combine and approve. Is that your motion? Combine and approve.
And the vote is twenty-one eyes. The next, order of business is amendments, twenty twenty-five, dash thirty-eight, authorized amendment of the twenty-five twenty-six budget, County General Fund one-on-one, and General Capital Projects Fund one seventy-one.
Motion to approve. Motion approved by Mr. Wilber, seconded by Mr. Reed. Any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I'd like to amend that, uh, approve the grants, and the team assistance, and break down the nonprofits individually.
Can I say that one more time?
I'd like to make a motion to do the grants, and the team assistance, and as one, and then break down the nonprofits individually.
We have a motion, seconded by.
Set the nonprofits to the side. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to break things down, and approve the. So, you wanna break out the nonprofits separate?
Right.
So, we're, we're past the broadband, broadband. We're voting now, we're down to resolution. First resolution is twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight.
Just for the one-on-one?
Yes.
Jones, you were talking about the through thing on that page.
Yes.
He was talking about that through thing, go to the bottom of the.
He wants the nonprofit individual, and then combine the rest of one-on-one, the grants, and then one seventy-one. I think that's what he's saying.
So, we already approved contracts and grants.
He's not talking about the question.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the. David, if you go to the page right before the very last page, it's got a one-on-one and a one-seventy-one. Right before the very last page, that is the two oh two-five dash thirty-eight, that entire page is. And what I was gonna do was, pretty much vote on everything except the nonprofits, and we'll break them out separate. And so, the very, almost to the last page. That entire page is the dash seventy-eight. I'd like to break out the nonprofits and vote on them separate.
Alright, well, let's start with that. So, let's pass a motion, and a second to do that. All those who say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call. Is it basically to pull out the nonprofits and break them separate? Individual.
So, vote, yes, would separate.
Yes, we'll separate. Just one to clear.
Ms. Currie. No. Dr. Lightrow.
Yes.
Ms. Woodard.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Butler, yes.
Ms. Wilber.
Yes.
Ms. Ed.
Yes.
Ms. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Wright, sorry. Ms. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Hop.
Yes.
Ms. Reed.
No.
Mr. Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Rupes.
Yes.
Ms. Bedouin.
No.
Ms. Brown.
No.
Mr. Sutton.
No.
Ms. Guthrie.
No.
Ms. Pruitt.
No.
Ms. Brown.
No.
Vote is twelve and a half, and to separate the nonprofits. Motion's filed in the hand to separate nonprofits.
Uh, this will probably take a little while, we take a five-minute break prior to ten discussion on nonprofits.
Five minutes break?
Yes.
Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at nine three one three four seven nine one five zero or visit haneyrealtypound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. Looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over twenty years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over eighty companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mastaffing.net or give us a call today at nine three one three four seven four two five five.
For over fifty years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit pesenergize.com or call us today.
Comes to Insurance, Winterbury and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at winterburinsurance.com or call us at nine three one three six three eight six three eight.
Department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to fifty to sixty percent less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at nine three one three four seven nine one five zero or visit haneyrealtypound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. Looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over twenty years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over eighty companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mastaffing.net or give us a call today at nine three one three four seven four two five five.
For over fifty years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit pesenergize.com or call us today.
Comes to Insurance, Winterbury and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at winterburinsurance.com or call us at nine three one three six three eight six three eight.
Department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to fifty to sixty percent less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at nine three one three four seven nine one five zero or visit haneyrealtypound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. Looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over twenty years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over eighty companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mastaffing.net or give us a call today at nine three one three four seven four two five five.
For over fifty years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit pesenergize.com or.
We passed a motion to separate, now we're taking a motion to approve everything on the one-on-one and one-seventy-one except the nonprofits. Just go and get everything else approved on one-on-one and one-seventy-one except the nonprofits. We could pull that. Motion by Ms. Curry? Second by Mr. Madore. Any discussion to approve everything except the nonprofits?
Yes.
All right, please vote.
And the vote will be twenty-one out.
Okay, so now we'll vote on the nonprofits individually. We'll start with the Star Theater. Their dollar amount is five thousand dollars. Motion to approve Star Theater, five thousand dollars. Motion by Ms. Curry, seconded by Ms. Woodard. Discussion. Ms. Gould?
First of all, I'd like to say that I listed all of these on my Facebook page, and I had four hundred and twenty-two views, two people commenting, which makes me think that the rest of the four hundred and twenty weren't against it, because they did not make a point to tell me no. Now, I did some figuring in talking to our trustee, there's approximately twenty thousand tax cards in the county, and if you figure out the price of five thousand dollars and divide that by your twenty thousand, you get twenty-five cents. So each person, each tax card, a portion of that, the twenty-five cents in that portion is going to go towards this. Kind of felt like that's a pretty good bank for it, but twenty-five cents from each person in the county that is in their tax card would go towards this nonprofit, this specifically. Just this one nonprofit, twenty-five cents.
Mr. Todd?
Okay, I will say this once instead of repeating it on every one of the nonprofits, we failed yet again miserably to do our primary job, which was to balance the budget. And now if you want to give money away to a nonprofit, that's sad, and it's wrong, and it's failing the people. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Any other discussion, Ms. Joyce?
Yes.
Please your mic.
My mom. Haney couldn't be here tonight, she had to take her mother to a, with counseling sessions and things happening. But if you notice when they now plays and things going on like those, they have them on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sunday nights. They have two shows on Fridays and two shows on Saturdays. They seat two hundred and fifty people, so the weekend brings in twelve hundred people in there, and most of them are from outer town. And then they do that ten weeks. They'll bring the people in, they're showing them at Goonies here, uh, by the end of the year, have also spent money compared to taxes. So the five thousand that she's asking for, when you fill out grants and says those are county support you, but when you don't support them, they're going to get the grants, and who keep their courage in those nonprofits that want to have a fundraiser or provide the grants? But don't have the rent and think, look, because we don't support them, they're doing wrong.
If we use the logic that every single nonprofit that brings anyone additionally into our county deserves county funds, this list would be twenty, thirty times longer. I respect the work that Star Theater does, I think that plays that get children in the community involved is a good thing, but that is a purely optional activity that should be done at their own expense, at the expense of those who participate. To fail to pass a balanced budget and to have to pass a tax increase and then to fund an optional activity is a slap in the face to the taxpayers and not looking at it as a commissioner, but looking at it as a taxpayer, I would be pissed off if this was funded. Thank you.
Mr. Reedy?
We three are failing unity, one-on-one, so I disagree. I want to skip down to the fifty-eight one ninety, the Chamber of Commerce, I'm just going to, I'm not going to skip one, 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 I'm going to comment on them. No, 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 it's stat to get, just hear me out of it. Okay, the Chamber of Commerce brings in a lot of money into this county, so a lot of people say, how can you be a conservative and vote for a nonprofit to come out of your budget that's going to come out of the fund balance? Well, we pull money out of the fund balance to balance the budget, and how can you as conservatives vote for that? Number one, the Chamber of Commerce is a money generating machine, so I can't see how, if you're conservative or I'm not conservative, how you can vote to defund an organization that is generating money for you. Okay, now we're back up to Star Theater. This Chamber of Commerce needs organizations that they are helping to pull people in to see and spend money on. Star is one of them. So I think we're talking about spending around sixty thousand dollars to fund these nonprofits, and it's, and it's just something that's, that's pouring, helping to bring income into the county with. So, you know, it's, it's a piece of tool, one of the tools that Chamber of Commerce uses to help generate money in this county.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, Star Theater located right out here in the city limits, they bring people in to the city, that's not county tax money. They also eat here, mostly in the city, so yeah, it's a really good thing for the city, and I think the city, they should fund it.
Mr. Madore?
Boy, just on that, why, I think those people that do come in overnight generate money for our hotel motel tax that we do directly use and benefit from the county. I, I'm just, if, maybe I heard you wrong, I don't think only the city government benefits from that activity. And I know it's not the courthouse, but it is a very historic building, this Antsman Hall and Star Theater, it is the oldest office house in the state. Representative Clay Doggett and Joey Hensley, I think, recognized its importance in the grand scheme of things and advocated for a grant right before COVID of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that Bill Lee supported, and that, I think that allowed them to, I think we need to recognize that it's, it's an important draw, and it's an important part of Pulaski's history, Giles County's history. I believe it was constructed in, it's three years after the Civil War, eighteen sixty-eight. So it's a gem, in my opinion, and like Mr. Savage said, it does provide extracurricular activities for young kids in our community, especially homeschool students. I, my whole play has shown that, I've realized how many homeschool kids are actually in our county needing good wholesome activity, so that's why I'm going to support it.
Ms. Ann Curry?
Yeah, and, you know, the city of Pulaski is part of Giles County, and when they benefit, we all benefit, especially our school system, so let's keep that in mind when we talk about just benefits of the city.
Anyone else? So yes, vote, we'll be to fund Star Theater at five thousand dollars. We're going to set up a vote of this individually, so we don't have to be a roll call vote. We're set up to vote this individually, so we will have to be a roll call vote.
Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Dr. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Wobbles? Ms. Wilber?
No.
Ms. Adams?
No.
Ms. Guthrie?
No.
Mr. Carter?
No.
Ms. Rock?
No.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Savage?
No.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Mr. Rubelski?
No.
Mr. Bedouin?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
You and I should let it go.
So that five thousand dollars favors. The next item on the agenda is the Child Development Center, five thousand dollars. I maintain a motion approved. Motion by Ms. Gould being seconded by Mr. Brown. Discussion. Ms. Jones?
Would, I would like to hear from the Sheriff's Department as to how important this is to, to them, this service. Do I need to make a motion that we suspend the rules or?
Ms. Jones, I think it's the Education Department. I think it would be the School Department. Would that be right?
Uh, Sheriff's Department. Well, both.
It's for special needs.
The child development is for special needs and the school would like to speak on that. Would that be, Ms. Jones, let you?
Can I can speak about the Child Development Center?
No ma'am, no ma'am. Do we have an elected official here? We have an assistant director of schools and a school board chair. I don't think we have to suspend the rules to allow.
The department did a good.
The department did, so. Mr. Van Toss?
David, we can suspend the rules if she does want to talk.
Y'all, y'all wouldn't do that.
I make a motion to suspend the rules where she can explain what she's for.
And I'll second that, I guess.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Any opposed? Ms. Jackson?
I greatly appreciate it. My name is Bethany Mize. I am an early interventionist manager, which I do developmental therapy with children here in Giles County. Sorry, and developmental therapy is I come to the homes of children. Um, we do have, um, we used to do the duckie race here, if you remember that, a long time ago. Um, we serve children with developmental disabilities and delays under the age of five, starting from birth. We get children from DCS. We get referrals from pediatricians. We work alongside with all of the physical therapists, speech therapists, occupational therapists, feeding therapists, everything here in Giles County. We go to their homes, get them ready, get them able to go to school system at three years old if they choose to. Um, if not, we have the extended option now. Tennessee is the first one to do that in a state of, or in the U.S., actually. Um, so now we are able to serve the children with disabilities here under the age of five. And the five thousand dollars that we're asking for is for building maintenance mostly. Um, we just had a bunch of storms roll through this past year. Our roof is pretty messed up. The classroom has mold in it now. Um, we need a new roof that was costing us eight thousand, so we would really like the five thousand dollars to help with that. Um, we do more than just developmental therapy with the entire agency. We serve mostly birth to five here in Giles County. But we do also have things like ISE coordinators who coordinate with older children in the school system with disabilities. We also serve older adults, senior adults. We give out loan equipment to people. What else do we do? We do everything you can think of under the DDA. We send people to disability on the hill to talk and try to get people to understand that early intervention is key for children before they go to kindergarten. Um, without that, they struggle a lot. And I know teachers struggle a lot when they don't understand why these kids haven't been served before the age of five. So that's what we do, the Child Development Center down the street from the MS. Thank you so, so much for letting me talk.
Any discussion?
Question?
Do I understand correctly that early intervention that you provide can help bring down costs on ultimately a public school system?
Yes, yes.
Would otherwise be dealing with the issues trying to go?
Yes, yes, it does. We help out the teachers. We meet with the teachers before the child goes to school at the age of three. If they decide to, parents get to decide that alongside the LEAs here, which that's another side question, but yes. Yes, Mr. Sutton? Sorry, I was your student.
Are you a private company that works with the school system? Or you're part of the school system that you, you would contain in here?
No, we're just a nonprofit. Um, we, our early intervention, we serve just like other early interventions around the state of Tennessee, where we have developmental therapists work with children. We just work alongside the teachers, the principals. Um, Ms. Leslie Hyatt is one of the teachers at Plaskam entry, which Plaskam entry is the only school in Giles County that lets three-year-olds come for developmental therapy in the school system. Um, so we prepare the children for that, and we work alongside with the teachers in order to get them into that school system, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Yeah, at what age do you start taking care of little kids?
We can get a referral as soon as birth. So if there was a child with NAS, Meonatal Absent Syndrome from Vanderbilt, they could send in a referral and we could go start then.
Well, I had an idea of trying to simply maybe move that to school, but being that young, I think I'm just gonna stay for you. Thank you.
Yes.
How many kids are you having right now?
Well, right now, we had this fiscal year forty-three. Um, and a lot of them aged out and went to school in August. Um, we actually had our first in the state of Tennessee child to go to the school system, from Giles County. Um, the first one to go at the age of five, because they extended that a few years ago, and she just went into the school system.
And those forty-three are, they're in Giles County?
They're in Giles County, yes. I can give you the exact number on my caseload right now, if you'd like. I have thirteen. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other department heads that would like to speak in this chair? Ms. Jones?
Thank you. I'll be quick. I know y'all are ready to leave. I just wanted to say that my youngest son, James, was diagnosed very early with autism at the age of one. He was, the Child Development Center was instrumental for him. And this year, he just started kindergarten. He's starting to talk. He's starting to interact. He's starting to engage with his peers. And that support early on was instrumental in that. So just wanted to share that lived experience with you on how important that service is. Thank you.
Any other discussion on funding the Child Development Center at five thousand dollars?
I would like to use someone else's information and investigate the work that they done. And this is for the public, not for the commissioners. This is only twenty-five cents, and this one, this is to do with kids. This is a great, great, great thing.
They're giving a roll call vote?
Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Dr. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbles?
No.
Ms. Wilber?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Rock?
No.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Savage?
No.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rubelski?
No.
Mr. Bedouin?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Funding is approved for the Child Development Center at five thousand dollars. Next on the list is the shelter, and their request is five thousand dollars. I maintain a motion to approve that request. Motion by Mr. Reagan, seconded by Ms. Pruitt. They're giving them a shelter of five thousand dollars. Discussion. Ms. Karen?
Yeah, y'all already know how I feel about the shelter. I just want to remind you what Karen told us the other day. There are only thirty-six shelters across the state of Tennessee. And how lucky are we to have one right near our county? So keep that in mind. They do a wonderful service. Shelter statistic applies to them. I'd also like Chief Woodard to share what, how the shelter and the Sheriff's Department work with it.
Okay, Ms. Woodard, would you like to?
I think you can hear me right here. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
I got two, two daughters. They're both adults. David's got daughters. I'm sure everybody in here knows a girl that's been in a relationship, maybe not an abusive relationship. And God help the guy that ever abuses one of my daughters. But you can't replace that safe space for some lady, some woman, and their kids that have been abused emotionally and physically, to give them a safe place to go. Because a lot of these people get in these, these ladies get in these relationships, they don't want to get out. They stay in abusive relationships, you know, sometimes for the, for the rest of their life, because they have nowhere to go. So, I mean, we work closely with them. We know that the service they provide is, is very necessary. Like I say, most of us here are fortunate that if we do have daughters that get in a situation, they have families they can learn to. But there's quite a few out there that do not have a place to go. So, I mean, of all the things we've talked about tonight, this is, to me, and I think the Sheriff's Department, probably top priority for us.
Ms. Carter?
One thing I'd like to add is, is you talking about a shelter for women and kids that takes place right when you call. It ain't like, well, we'll get back with you next week or something. This is a situation where they have to step in and do it right then. It ain't something that can be postponed. And I, I support it a hundred percent.
Mr. Savage?
Um, due to the fact that a lot of domestic abuse is drug and alcohol related, would there be any way to use money from the drug fund to fund this rather than out of the fund balance for nonprofits?
Ms. Woodard? Would you like to address?
They've already gotten it.
What?
We've already voted on that, y'all.
Yeah, that was part of the opioid.
Opioid.
Yeah, that was part of the opioid investment that we approved a couple of months ago.
So the children already had opioid money?
They did get some opioid money, and they are putting it straight to good use.
Savage, that answer your question?
So they, okay, so they're asking for additional money in addition to what was already approved. Dr. Call, okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Reed.
Yes. Money in the opioid fund and so forth. I think they use that in, in doing part of the work on the, on the building. No, we did all that by volunteer. But it's just a small part of what they need to fund it. On a routine basis, something needs to be on that.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I actually done a, I'll say an unofficial survey on my Facebook page on a couple of these. This one being the shelter, I had over three hundred responses. One, no. Only one. And then you go to my Facebook page and look it over. Everyone on there, men and women, were both saying, yes, please fund this. These are the same people that was actually on my Facebook raising Cain when we were passing a tax increase to. So these same people that was fussing about that were the same people on my Facebook that said, please, yes, please fund the shelter.
Ms. Tucker?
Every one of those three hundred people are more than welcome to give their own money to it. And I recommend you tell them they need to give to it.
Stop asking the rest of us. Any other comments on the five thousand dollar appropriation for the shelter? If not, we will do a roll call vote?
Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Dr. Michael?
Yes.
Our errand will send me there.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wobbles?
No.
Mr. Wilber?
Yes.
And Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Guthrie?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Rock?
No.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Savage?
No.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rubelski?
No.
Mr. Bedouin?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
No.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Motion approves. The shelter will be funded at five thousand dollars. Next on the list is the Senior Center.
Excuse me, David.
Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Will you state the tally for that one and the Child Development Center? I didn't hear y'all.
So far, we've approved the Star Theater for five thousand. We've approved the Child Development Center for five thousand. Sixteen to five on this shelter.
Okay. And what about the Child Development Center?
Child Development. Seventeen.
Seventeen forward.
Seventeen. Thank you.
Now we'll move to the Senior Center. Senior Center, their request is for twenty thousand dollars. I have motion approved by Mr. Wilber, seconded by Ms. Gould. Any discussion?
This one was easy, man. It's a dollar per tax card, because it's twenty thousand and twenty thousand tax card. So that would be a dollar of the tax money generated by that nonprofit. Also, I will add that it is a place, I feel, that gives senior centers, senior citizens a purpose. A reason to get out of the house, a reason to get up, a reason to go somewhere. And they've done their job working in this county, many of them, and taking care of people in this county. It's just a way to give back to these people. And I would say these people, because I am one of, I'm a senior center, I'm a senior citizen now. And so when you don't have someplace to get up and go, you have a very sad life, and you get, it gets harder and harder to do anything. And I, I mean, my grandmother used it, my, my mother used it, my mother-in-law has used it. I just feel like it's a great place, and the county is just a way to give back to the people that have helped the county.
Ms. Savage?
I generally believe that all nonprofit giving should be done out of the goodness of one's own heart and through private funds. However, the Senior Center is the only one that I will vote to approve, and I'd like to explain why. The Senior Center requires county contribution to continue to receive state funding. If the Senior Center did not receive county funding, they would cease to operate and they would shut down. Uh, so that is why I am changing my vote for this one.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I was going to actually echo what Caleb said. All the things that we have been known for in this three years that we've been here, we definitely don't want to be the commission to shut that we've been here, we definitely don't want to be the commission to shut down the senior center.
Mr. Wilber?
Not only the companionship, but they have a good meal there also.
Any other discussion? If not, let's do a roll call vote.
Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Dr. Lightfoot?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Plom?
Yes.
Mr. Wilber?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Hopp?
No.
Ms. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rubelski?
Yes.
Mr. Bedouin?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Gills?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Freder?
Yes.
And Adam and Wendy?
All right, so twenty, twenty thousand dollars for the senior system is approved. Next is the Chamber of Commerce. Their amount is twenty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars, so I entertain a motion to approve that amount. Motion approved. Motion by Mr. Bedouin, seconded by Judith Pruitt. I've been looking at you all, all night.
But you don't, I don't think you look that way, Chris.
Seconded by Ms. Carrigan.
You're fine.
All right. So, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars, any discussion on funding the Chamber of Commerce? Ms. Gills?
I've done all the, I'll do the math on this one. It's one dollar and twenty-four cents, which gives us a fine total of two dollars and ninety-nine cents per property. And that is something to me speaks volumes to the public, that we're here to support them. And tourism is a big thing. I'm not gonna tell you all about counting the tags, but I did it all weekend, and it, it, it was amazing what you could see out there. So, if you haven't driven them around and counted, look at the tags. That's what's bringing them in, is the tourism.
Anyone else? Ms. Reedy?
Yes. This, this is a wise business investment. We can invest, uh, twenty-four, seven, and we can get back somewhere, hope it comes here.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Dr. Lightfoot?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Plom?
Yes.
Mr. Wilber?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Hopp?
No.
Ms. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Savage?
No.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Ms. Rubelski?
No.
Mr. Bedouin?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Gills?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Fifteen six.
Right.
Fifteen one, Ms. Carrigan.
Six, fifteen six. Fifteen six.
I'm sorry.
So, Shane, has anything you think from us, um, the children do not approve all the nonprofits?
All right, next resolution.
Hello.
Hey, over there.
Wake up. I think it's a shame that we passed all of them except the Star Theater. And I think why, they bring money into this county more than the five thousand dollars. And we're not on a budget, man, I beg you to try.
The next resolution is twenty-fourty-five, thirty-nine, operating amendment of twenty-five, twenty-six, general purpose school, plan point four, holding.
One wish is of the commission.
Yes, that's right.
A motion by Evan, seconded by you. Any discussion? Which one, which one? Twenty-five, dash, thirty-nine. Reedy, Reedy. The very next one.
This was thoroughly discussed in the school committee and then the budget committee. There were no objections, I believe it was unanimous, just to remind everyone.
Any further discussion? Yes, vote is to approve this resolution, twenty-five, dash, thirty-nine, full vote.
About twenty-one, high.
Are y'all in that session, man?
My kids ready, good man, I'm sorry.
Oh, some people, I gotta be on the go, get up and on the go.
That's right. Next resolution is forty, twenty-five, dash, forty, to streamline the legislative body.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion approved by Mr. Rubelski, seconded by Ms. Pruitt. Any discussion? Ms. Jones?
So, this, this is some tidbits, I don't know if, you know, y'all can take it, leave it, whatever. But in the twenty-twenty-two election, we had Republicans running for office. Ten Republicans were elected, were elected, ten that had the arnix in the range, and the rest were, um, they ran as independents. In the first and second slots, with the, that being the ones that got the most votes, um, and then those that came, uh, the second, the ones that got the second to, to the, uh, in the first and second slots, we say, you had eight Republicans and the rest were independents. So, I can see this being pushed by Republicans who want to get more of a ratio, a higher ratio of Republicans to independents. But, being a Republican, I still think that I should represent my constituents. And I believe in, in my district, more people prefer to keep their three, uh, Repub, their three representatives. It just so happens those aren't as Republicans, but, I mean, in the next year, I think they'd rather have three, or the next election, they'd rather have three than two. Um, so I would be a no vote on this, um, generally streamlined means easier to get taxes passed and that sort of thing. But it also cuts back, um, discussions, and we have twenty-one commissioners now. I value each of their opinions, and whether I agree or not, I like to hear them. So, mine's a no vote.
Ms. Gills?
I am for keeping the twenty-one, and part of that is, currently, the way that the district is for me, District Seven, you have this city in the middle of town, and then you have over the bridge, what we all call, out the Monah Hill Highway. Well, the two sitting to my left are here in the city, fairly close together where their homes are. That leaves area for everybody over the bridge, where there are numerous subdivisions, they won't have any representation. They would, and, and why I say that is, if I'm out walking down the street, literally walking, my neighbors stop and talk to me. There are people around me stopping, wanting to ride down the road, going slow. So, the people in my area speak to me. But if they didn't see me, they may not, and their opinion would be lost, because, and I'm not saying anything ugly about them, but they, yeah. Right. But I like, I just think it's a little fairer to have them spread out and not just be lumped in one area. And that allows me to be on that side, just bumping.
The intention is to not, not to decrease people's access to the representatives, quite the opposite. The, the idea here is to let us actually get something done. The more people you put in the room to get, if you want to get something done, then assign it to a handful of people. If you don't want to get it done, sign a hundred or two hundred to it. I understand that sometimes we want to see things slow down and not, not speed up, but I look at the three years we've been trying to do renovations to this courthouse, just basic structural ones. Twenty-one of us can't seem to agree on it whatsoever. And that's just one example of the issues I think we have of having so many people involved. And as Mr. Stow had already stated, when you've got, uh, seven people on a, a committee, you're not getting but a third of the representation of this whole, um, commission. I think it'd be much better if we could change this where we've got fourteen representatives and then be able to, um, work through the committees, having all fourteen people on those committees, so we can actually get something accomplished in the committees and know the answer when we come in here and report. I think it'd be fantastic. Are we still all gonna disagree on things? Absolutely, that's not about to change. People will think we're not gonna still disagree, you're wrong. Problem is, then, or the benefit is, if we do this, we're gonna have a better chance of, of talking to one, eating everything out with one another and getting a resolution to a problem more quickly. That's what I'm in favor of, and I don't mind the fact that it reduces the number of people in government. So, that's, that's it, I'm not trying to hurt anybody's representation. I know how many calls I get, how many people I talk to on a regular basis, and how many times my wife is trying to have a conversation with me, and I'm, sorry, I gotta take this, I know it's somebody local or, and I, I make sure I take the time to speak to all those people, as I hope all of you do. I don't see where that's gonna make any difference if I had a fifty percent increase, which in theory don't be a thirty-three percent increase, if we try to take it down from three to two. But my point is, I'm still gonna talk to those people because I agree to be a representative. It's not a problem. At least that's my take, and that's why I put this out here, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
I'm probably one of more, uh, out there, social commissioners as far as social media and stuff like that. And I, I have people calling me, and as a commissioner, I don't, my vote affects the entire county, just like all of the other twenty. It affects the whole, so I do take phone calls from other districts, and some of them will tell me, yeah, I did talk to my commissioner. Because I always say, hey, please reach out to your commissioner, you know, let them know how you feel. And most of them do say they did get in touch with their commissioner, but I do have several that say, hey, we have called, we have done this, we have text, we have messengered, and can get in touch with them. So, if we go down to fourteen, I'm sure they won't be able to get in touch with, you know, it's taking one more away than would or would not answer. So, I, and right now, um, I'll, I'll just stop there, I'll stop there.
Mr. Sutton?
Mr. Plom, if you may, now you can tell you, this issue, helping you. We are voting to work on this and discuss it, or we're voting to make it happen this, this county year or next county year.
Resolution in front of us is for the next elected body to elect fourteen commissioners instead of twenty-one. This is a real change, it will take two-thirds majority to pass. Oh? Graham, shake his hand.
Yeah.
Okay, before we vote, we'll find out, sure, but let's continue discussion, who hasn't spoken today?
Um, I was just gonna say, I mean, quality of representation matters just as much as quantity does. So, if you have a commissioner who never responds to you, answers to vote them out of office, having more commissioners does not mean you're going to get better representation necessarily. If who you have in office doesn't respond to you, vote them out, put someone better in. That would be my opinion on this here. Um, as far as, I do believe that there would be better solutions brought forward if you had fourteen commissioners on every, um, single, um, committee to discuss things and bring forth solutions. And I also disagree that, um, having fourteen commissioners instead of twenty-one would decrease quality of representation because having three per district dilutes each person's vote across many people. So, by, therefore, by having two commissioners, you actually have a better shot of getting someone who aligns with your values and ideological stance than, uh, with three. Thank you.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes. I was thinking in terms of representation of people. So, I looked up, uh, Murray County's, um, stats, and they have twenty-two commissioners, and they have a hundred thirteen thousand people in the county, very thriving county. That's one for every commissioner, that is five thousand, hundred, thirty-six people that they have to represent. I look here in our county, and, uh, at twenty-one commissioners, one person represents fourteen hundred and seventy-five people, not five thousand, hundred, thirty-six. And with fourteen commissioners, we would represent twenty-two hundred and fif, uh, and twelve, twenty-two hundred and twelve. So, you know, the, the amount of representation does not increase significantly by going down to fourteen commissioners. And I think the other, the other, uh, attributes have been discussed about proficiency and, and, uh, so, you know, I guess I favor it because I think it would more streamline the commission, and we would, we would not reach points where we'd become ineffective by arguing and, and, um, putting off doing things that we needed to do.
Anyone else? Mr. Allen?
Yes, I don't think we need to cut the commission because we got several commissioners been sick and missed meetings, and I don't know about everybody else, but this last two weeks, my phone, I've spent time after time after time. And I don't know how many calls Richie's got, I don't know how many there are. But, and now there are some commissioners saying, well, I don't get any. Well, a lot of people say, they can't get a hold of me because every time they try to call this busy. And when I get home, I might have seven, eight people on there that'll be calling back, and I can't call them back. And I'd hate for it to be, I'd hate to get a third more calls than I'm getting, I'd have to harry my secretary.
Now, if the people I represent want less representation, I would be for the fourteen, but the ones I've talked to want to keep it at twenty-one. And nobody is, in my district, is wanting to go fourteen that has told me that.
Mr. Williams, is this a majority or two-thirds? So, if you look at State of Tennessee Attorney General opinions, specifically those from two thousand and nine and two thousand and one, the mechanism for doing this would not be voting it up or down to go to fourteen versus twenty-one. The mechanism would be for triggering a reapportionment. And as you all know, reapportionment normally takes place every ten years. However, according to the language in the statute, it says that the legislative bodies composed of representatives from districts in the county, as drawn by the county legislative body pursuant to statutes enacted by the General Assembly, districts shall be reapportioned at least every ten years based upon the most recent federal census. The term "at least" implies, or outright says, that this body can trigger a new apportionment. The apportionment only takes a majority vote to accomplish. And as part of that apportionment, reading also from this particular opinion, the county legislative body may increase or decrease the number of districts when the reapportionment i- is made, and also goes with that as the authority to increase or decrease the number of members within the statutorily allowable range, which is implicit in that authority. The range being no less than nine, no greater than twenty-five. If you look at the road... If you look at the rules, the rules under Rule Eight quorum in voting simply reflect what that reapportionment in this body has already done. Specifically, the purfatory language, a quorum shall be a majority of the legally constituted legislative body. This body being composed of twenty-one commissioners, if eleven commissioners are present. That doesn't seem to mandate twenty-one, it seems to simply reflect what this body has done in setting its size. So under the circumstances, it's at least my initial reading, that it would simply take a majority vote to reapportion. Did I thoroughly confuse them?
No, sir. Two-thirds, that's what they talk about.
Okay, so our lawyer, paraphrasing, he said, this resolution can't be passed by a simple majority of eleven votes. Is that correct?
That's the way I read it, of course. This is a question that could always be asked of Attorney General Chris Division, um, with, with Representative Doggett. That may be the best course of action if there's some concern about what the vote should be. Uh, I think this is something relatively new to me, because as you know, I only know what y'all tell me. Uh, and so I know that County Executive Stowe's been looking at this issue for a while.
Yeah, if I may, thanks, Mr. Chairman. So you hit the nail on the head from a legal standpoint. All I can do is just kind of benchmark up, up of other counties and like, I know there's redistricting and reapportionment, two different type of issues, but Lewis County, um, before the previous election, they reduced from twenty-one to fourteen, went through the same exercise we're doing with a majority vote. Um, so it's been done by other counties as well.
Ms. Jones?
This resolution doesn't say anything about reapportionment, it just says you're going to reduce the, the number of, uh, commissioners. So I guess it's assuming, we're supposed to assume, that it won't be reapportioned, it'll be, um, one from three to two in each district. I mean, where's the reapportionment fit in here? Shouldn't that be spelled out as well? Since that's what it's going to take to actually, and it seemed to be, and I know which probably fine line there is, but it doesn't mean here about reapportionment.
Well, the way that I would read it is, if you're saying we want to reduce, the way to go about that would be reapportionment. So it's...
So, so would that be, shouldn't that be part of the resolution?
Uh, unless it's considered that's how the resolution was enacted through reapportionment.
Well, I thought CTS has said that in order to change the number of representatives, you would have to wait until the ten years was up, until, till it was time for census, I believe?
Yeah.
Y'all have all heard my opinion about CTS. The, the answers they give you are usually only as good as the questions you ask them specifically. And, and the statute clearly says reapportionment's done at least every ten years, which means you can't extend past the ten years. The "at least" language implies that you can reapportion at any point, because so choose, as the bottom.
Does reapportionment cost us, money-wise, from this?
I, I, I do not know. That would be a question for budget and, and commission, and, and I will say, I only see what CTS says, if someone forwards it to me, I've not seen anything from CTS on this issue.
Ms. Curry?
So, Gail, I was the chairman of the Census Committee in twenty twenty, and, um, apportionment happens when your district's right away. And so we, um, unless we're doing another census to determine that, you know, we're not going to reapportion until the next census. And a new cen, like, if we did a midterm census count, we would have to pay for it, the feds would pay for it. Columbia, Lebanon, um, they've just done some, and they paid for the census themselves, and they are going to hugely benefit from it, because they have grown a crazy amount. We, we can't justify that expense.
Ms. Woodard?
What's going to happen when the majority of the time you have a tie and the county, um, executive, not the executive, but the chairman is going to have to break the tie? You'll have seven mad at you for being on their side, or what? Not counting, not, it's going to be hard to get, uh, two-thirds of those over to the county.
But, yeah, I would not be tied right there, I would vote for a smaller vote. Tracy?
I want my motion to send it back to committee. It's been a while since it's been in the committee, and it just got brought up, voted once, I think it was several months ago, one of them discussed. So that's my motion, send it back to committee. The more citizens of the county know what's going on.
Motion by Tracy Wilber, send it back to committee, sent in by Dr. Laitman. Do we have to address the motion to, that we have on table to approve? Mr. Norman?
I'm not the county attorney. I was going to comment on this motion, to send it back to committee.
Please do.
I...
With your microphone.
I am inclined to reduce the size of the commission. However, um, you know, Mr. Edwards points out, there are unintended con, but most likely unintended consequences. As we know, there are unintended consequences of all actions. Um, Ms. Henson was speaking earlier, seemingly on something separate, about, you know, the voting method and reducing it to three. Instead of voting for three, you give one vote. And I think the, uh, the, the response to that was, no, it's mandated by statute. Um, I'm wondering if we were, if it was reduced to two per district, well, do you still, do you still get to vote for three? Do you still get to vote for two? What is, what does the TCA actually say? I think we, we just, we had an offer that was wrong, Mr. Wilber's right. Um, as chair of the legislative committee, I was present for the last time we talked about this, and I thought the consensus was to have a few at-large members, so that we didn't have an even number of commissioners. Because if we did have an even number of commissioners, that would definitely give the camp, uh, the, what was the county executives tie-breaking vote so much more power. It's further complicated by the fact that county executive is no longer chair, and there were, there is no way to break ties. So I, I think it just added...
Sorry, wouldn't apply now, because this wouldn't take effect until the next election.
Right.
When you would have a county executive that hopefully serves as chair.
Well, all that to say, it's been a long meeting, I am inclined to go the route of producing, but if we don't have to decide this month, I think it's prudent to, you know, answer the questions that we still have about. Ms. Jones makes a fair point, this resolution doesn't mean we're not reapportionment, and if it's meant to trigger reapportionment to therefore get us to reduction, we're, most of us are just wondering that tonight.
Okay, so have a motion, send this back to me. Wilber, sent it by Dr. Laitman. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Jones?
Specifically, we're talking legislative committee?
Yep.
That's where it got brought up before.
Okay.
Yes. Any further discussion on sending this back to me? All right, no further discussion, please, well, send this back to committee. Yes, send it back to me.
Fifteen eyes and six no.
Motion, Curry, send it back to committee. Where now, through unfinished business? Does anyone have any unfinished business?
Wilber?
Motion, Duggar.
Oh, just a second, anybody have any new business? Are there, are there any announcements?
There will be a legislative committee meeting at the next time slot, which I believe is under the administrative umbrella, which is the same day as school and budget. I don't know what date that is, but the next upcoming, the budget meeting normally follows the board of education meeting, right?
Now, I would like to address the issue right there, having all the meetings on the same day too.
Okay.
Well, all that to say, I don't think, I'm going to call the next legislative meeting at the next appropriate time, not delay all this.
Chris?
Motion, Duggar. I don't think we need to move to CTS.